Test one, two. Test one, two. All right, now we will ask for a moment of silence in observation of Peace Officer Memorial Day. And we have two right here in Two Rivers and Officer Thomas Dodge and Officer Leo Rock. Thank you for that. It looks like Officer Leo Rock, end of watch, October 5th, 1926. And Officer Thomas Dodge, end of watch, September 10th, 1975. Two Rivers never forgets. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Is my mic on? I didn't think it sounded like it either.
Now, okay.
Good, okay. All right, roll call, Amanda.
Chrissy Coach.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Here.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Husky.
Here.
And Jeff Delkey is absent.
All right, Jeff had contacted me earlier and said he may or may not be able to make it. And if he did, it would be late. So he does not want to join us from a remote location. So we will move on to six, which is a public hearing. Under that, we have a public hearing on ordinance to amend municipal code ordinance. Section 10-1-24B1K of the zoning code of the city of Two Rivers to prohibit the creation of new drive-through establishments on properties fronting on Washington Streets between the West Twin River and 21st Street. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. Before we open up the public hearing, any background on that, Greg?
I would just note that this does come as a recommendation from the Plan Commission. It is also recommended for approval by the Design Committee of Two Rivers Main Street. As is noted in the preamble to the ordinance, the intent is to preserve the appearance and safety of the traditional pedestrian-friendly downtown area that we have from the Washington Street Bridge over the West Twin River and as proposed up to 21st Street. That area, for the most part, is traditional downtown. It has zero setback buildings that are immediately adjacent to each other. There has been some interest in intermittently over the last several years by fast food chains notably in considering purchasing buildings, taking them down and creating new drive-throughs that would enter and/or exit off Washington Street. The thought here was that introducing that in-and-out traffic in mid-block can not only first of all presents a pedestrian safety hazard and also takes away from that traditional quality of the downtown as a walkable cohesive district, at least in that limited approximately, what is that? Six-block area in question. This would not preclude new drive-through establishments being created that have entry and exit off side streets in that area. Like, you know, the old bank first had a drive-through that both came in and out off the side street, but it would preclude basically new uses require curb cuts into Washington Street for entering and exiting traffic to a drive-through.
I know another thing we talked about in conjunction with that is the amount of parking that would actually take away off of Main Street. You would lose probably roughly about three stalls in front of any of those, possibly even four, because you have to have, obviously, the width of the driveway to get in and out. And then you have to have clearance so you can see around any parked cars. So it would have a big negative impact to the parking in downtown in which we're seeing a lot of problems, especially right here around Central Park in this area where we receive complaints all the time about the lack of parking. That we don't want to take away any more parking in our downtown where it is already fairly limited.
It seems what we run into with a lot of the chains that look at Two Rivers and we certainly, we don't want to be unfriendly to those chains, but would like to steer them to places where they don't have this adverse impact. They want to be on Highway 42, generally south of the downtown. It's state jurisdiction, state trunk highway. The state controls ingress and egress and it's mighty tough to make anything work in that area. Once you get, once you get over to Lincoln Avenue and head north, the traffic counts drop considerably. So that leaves existing built-up areas, basically, that would need to be redeveloped for these kind of uses. This doesn't address the northernmost block of, I'll call it the business district, 20, excuse me, Washington Street from 21st to 22nd. We've already got QuickTrip on one side of the road, a vacant Speedway and some properties that in the past have been targeted for redevelopment on the other. It does not restrict such development on 22nd Street either. Highway 42, 22nd Street.
Okay, so we're going to open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to solely speak on this topic, step up to the podium, my right, your left, state your name and address for the record. And we will have three calls for the public hearing. Opening up, call number one.
Bob Patrowski from Post Office Box 1265, Menonawak. Came here in regard to the billing located formerly Anytime Fitness. I've had a lot of applications, people that wanted to go through. Does that billing qualify? Or does that billing in the situation of that? Because it enters from, for example, Starbucks wanted to drive in from Washington Street and in the parking lot, pick up your coffee and go out on the side street.
My initial reaction would say no because it, I'm pretty sure in there it said new curb cuts, but I will defer that to Greg.
Oh, it's actually the establishment of any new drive-through businesses.
Okay.
So.
So then that would.
Require entry or exit. There may be existing curb cuts. I may have spoken wrong when I referenced curb cuts earlier. But, but yeah, Bob, that's in the 2000 block, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that.
1900 block.
Oh, the 1900, I beg your pardon. So that would be, that would fall under this restriction if.
But there's no curb regarding being cut there.
No, and actually, the ordinance, Jack helped me out here too. The ordinance reads establishment of new businesses. So a curb cut there would be fine to serve a parking lot, but not, as this ordinance is written, to be used as an entry or exit for a drive-through.
That's a big factor. You know, that's a 3,500 square foot building over there. And to get a business in there, like, you know, even your restaurant business, it's pretty difficult. Which I bet you I've been trying to get in there, you know? So.
That looks pretty all-encompassing.
Right, whether there's a curb cut now or.
Regardless of any curb cut.
Yeah. And yeah, certainly, to Mr. Patrowski's concern, the council could address it by altering the district if you see fit. The block in question, wow, that's two blocks in, isn't it?
Two blocks. But see, that would eliminate the Anytime Fitness that was there too. Because that was an exit in, in, enter and.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. Anytime Fitness wasn't a, this.
It wasn't a drive-through that you pick up things.
Correct, correct.
But like I said, there's so many Mr. Coffees and Starbucks that are looking at it. That was my real concern, you know?
Yeah, I think this just prohibits drive-through.
Right.
At one time, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. And Elizabeth did point out that property does have frontage on 19th Street, so. But again, if the drive-through traffic is routed in or out, and I would, I would take it from this, if, if the only way to get to a drive-through would be to turn and drive through a parking lot to the drive-through, you're still using that as the entry drive for a drive-through. And it seems most of the, most of the applications we hear about, you know, whether it's fast coffee, fast food, whatever, if they have a drive-through, that drive-through is doing most of the business. That's, that's our society. We like it fast. We like it mobile. So this would, again, if adopted, would prohibit those uses if they require entry or exit off or onto Washington Street in that area from the bridge to 21st. Jack?
I just wanted to say, that isn't clear to me because if you look at the ordinance, it says premises of such establishments entering directly from Washington Street or exiting from the premises of such establishments directly onto Washington Street. So if they enter or exit from a lot, for example, next door to the premises and access the adjoining premises, that way they're not accessing it directly from Washington Street. So that's how I'd interpret the ordinance anyhow.
How would you propose fixing that?
Because right now, then that would allow Mr. Patrowski's, but I think it also does talk about curb cuts too, does it not?
I.
No, you just added that.
I used that term earlier, I'm sorry.
Got it.
That's, in most cases, what one of the undesirable effects would be, a new curb cut? Not in the case of Mr. Patrowski's. You're right, Jack. I mean, it doesn't say, I think if you, if you came in through a parking lot that was on that premises were covered, if you enter from an adjacent premises.
Yeah, just trying to think here.
That'd be access by easement in that instance.
Well.
Or by some means.
Or by, by lack of physical obstruction. Because they may not be looking for permission.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Sure. We've, we've all been known to go into a, a commercial parking lot and end up accessing the drive-through next door by snaking through, at least I have.
I don't know even when traveling through adjoining property or including traffic entering or exiting from Washington Street, which
Was it?
traverses other property.
Of such establishments.
Well, pretty much says you can't enter or exit on Washington Street.
Right.
And you can, as long as you're not going to a drive-through. And you could, under this, as long as you're not going to a drive-through.
The only reason I.
No, you make a good point. It's specific to the premises and what if you could gain access from another premises?
Well, you mentioned the parking lot.
Yep.
I was thinking of circumstances where the parking lot could be used to access adjoining property without going directly onto that property.
Heck, it could be an adjacent parcel used for a parking lot by the same business.
But they still couldn't enter or exit on Washington Street. Not according to this.
Oh, we're saying you can't establish a new drive-in or drive-through establishment that result, but it does, I think, to Jack's point, say
Yeah.
accessing that premises from Washington or exiting.
Premises includes parking lot. And you go into the parking lot, then you're accessing that business, those premises.
Right.
But if there's a parking lot or something, I don't know what alley, or a vacant lot that isn't owned by the premises, you enter that directly from Washington Street to go next door, park next door, go through, drive through next door. Then, then I think this doesn't cover.
They'd still have to exit that same property, that same said property, because you still can't exit onto Washington Street. It says from entering or exiting onto Washington Street.
Right, directly from or directly onto.
Right, so even if that property would be on Washington Street, they're still accessing the the drive-through via Washington Street, so they still can't do that.
Yeah, they are. The question would be whether they're entering it or exiting it directly.
Oh, the, the, okay, the term directly.
Yeah, and I think what Jack points out is certainly wasn't an omission. We were looking to leave in the code.
Oh, just brought it up because you, you mentioned a situation that didn't seem to be covered.
Thank you. I don't know how this would fly. I don't, I don't know how parentheses are viewed in an ordinance, but what if it read entering into the premises of such establishments directly from Washington Street? I'd put parentheses, maybe you could just use commas, or via any adjacent property. Or exiting the premises of such establishment, establishments, excuse me, directly onto Washington Street. Or via any adjacent property. Not sure.
Think you might want to say something about passing through the property from Washington Street to the business though. And I guess, no, I don't, maybe that's implied in what you, what you have. Now that might work.
During the provided, however, that after June 1, 2023, no new drive-in or drive-through establishments may be created that result in vehicular traffic entering into the premises of such establishments.
Directly or indirectly from Washington Street or?
That is indirectly, is indirectly a little ambiguous.
Yeah, yeah.
Directly from Washington Street or via any adjacent property or exiting from a premises of such establishments directly onto Washington Street or exiting via any adjacent property over?
I think that's better, yeah, yeah.
Okay with that in parentheses?
I think it would be okay in parentheses. I think it prohibits them in ordinances.
And I'm sorry, we're still in the middle of the public hearing, aren't we?
That's true.
Yeah, but be happy to return with that proposal if that interests the council.
Okay, still, call one. We're going to close call two, open up call three of the public hearing. Closing call two and opening up the third and final call of the public hearing. All right, we will close the public hearing and offer up a motion from council for discussion.
I will make a motion to accept it with the changes that the city manager has made.
All right, we have a motion from Scott seconded by Darla. Council discussion. Greg, can you go over that as?
If we were in the second paragraph of section one sub-K, the paragraph that starts up, provided, and it would now read, provided, however, that after June 1, 2023, no new drive-in or drive-through establishments may be created that result in vehicular traffic entering into the premises of such establishments directly from Washington Street. New language here inserted paren, or entering via, or excuse me, or entering across any adjacent property, close paren. Or entering over any adjacent property. Okay? Jack, you good with that?
Maybe entering from Washington Street over.
Okay, or entering from, okay, or entering from Washington Street over any adjacent property.
And exiting.
Or exiting from the premises of such establishments directly onto Washington Street or?
Onto Washington Street over adjacent.
Or, or exiting
Yeah.
onto Washington Street over adjacent property. Along that portion of Washington Street lying north of the West Twin River and south of 21st Street. So the intent there being to add that restriction to any adjacent parcel that might somehow be incorporated into the entering or exiting
Yeah.
pattern.
Used from Washington Street, purpose of.
New drive-throughs also need a conditional use permit as well, do they not?
They do.
Yes. So I mean, it would have to come, obviously, before Plan Commission passed that and then come back here for, I believe, a public hearing and then a vote by council in order to get any drive-through passed regardless.
Yeah, understanding.
This makes it, helps make it a little bit more clear that this is the intent, but even if we have, you know, this not exactly, and someone wants to try to loophole around it, we know what the intent is.
And, you know, too, I'd mentioned earlier that, you know, the interest we periodically heard from chains about dropping an existing building to create a new drive-through. The other thing that really motivates this is up until three or four years ago, conditional uses could be pretty much tailored on a case-by-case basis. And as the city attorney would agree, I expect, there was a change in the law approved by the legislature, signed by the governor that, a few years ago, that basically requires that cities have relatively uniform standards for the, the granting or denial of conditional use permits. So it's, it's a real slippery slope to say, well, this one is okay because of these mitigating factors. This one isn't okay because of these factors. It's, it's.
True, it should be expressed as clearly as possible within the ordinance to avoid rejecting, say, a conditional use permit because of implications from the language of the ordinance. So it's tougher to do based on discretion.
Yeah, we used to, we used to really like conditional use permits for that reason, but there's not the flexibility there used to be.
Any other counsel discussion?
And I would just note, I'm sorry, we, I didn't mean to interrupt, Bonnie, we did send a mailing to the owners of all properties fronting on, with frontage on Washington Street in the subject area. I had an inquiry from one property owner who, after it was explained, said he had no objections. Elizabeth, our city planner, has had one question, but neither of those folks that called in really took a position on well, one, after hearing about it, said I'm fine with it, and the other was just a question.
Bonnie?
The only thing that I know, I'm, I'm, I know this is a good idea and yet I, I don't know. I would like to see it, even though that we would create no new driveways as opposed to, it's, because, you know, QuickTrip has people coming and going and sometimes it can get pretty heavy traffic. I mean, it's probably a rare thing. I, I I don't know. I'll, I suppose I'll support it, but it's, it's a hard thing for me to vote yes for because I hate to see businesses not come here too, just because, you know. Is there? Because I don't want to see any new driveways to take parking away. I, I guess what I'm having a trouble, having trouble with is understanding if there's a way for them to do it, they cannot do it. Do you understand why, I mean, like, that bank you were talking about and these gas stations, those are almost ideal places to have something like this because they have a natural entryway and exit.
It wouldn't preclude the bank anymore. It, it would just preclude the bank from making another exit and taking away parking off Washington Street there. They can still have their drive-through on the side street. And I don't remember what the street number is on that one, probably 15th, I think.
Yeah.
So on 15th, right by Solis, they can still access that drive-through. So they can still, if there's a drive-through restaurant that wants to come there, they can still do that. They just can't put a curb cut in the middle of Washington Street. And then take away probably three to four parking spots on Washington Street that'll affect, like Casa Mexico, Dela Brew Jewelry and the investment firm on the end. It would affect them greatly because they don't have parking lots. And then you just took four parking spots away from them that's on street. That place could still have their drive-through access on 15th.
Actually, Marietta's Deli was in there for a while and they, and they had a drive-through. So that you could come in, you, you come in, you order your food, pick it up and, and go out the same, on the same street. So they never, they never came in or left on Washington. Just a way to guide probably anybody who's considering it will look through the ordinances and say, hmm, I might have to rethink my design.
Al, do you have your hand up too? Okay, anybody else? Okay, anybody else? Tim?
I'm kind of concerned. There's already an existing driveway there where if they came in from Washington and went out on, what is that, Nineteenth?
Are you talking the Anytime Fitness?
Yeah.
Okay.
I understand that we're trying to not lose parking spots and not lose, but if it would help give business to something that's not being used right now and not a lot of foot traffic up far up, stand with a further downtownier with foot traffic, but.
I mean, it's certainly something we can amend and put in there to say what Greg maybe didn't intentionally say earlier on with the no new curb cut for it as well.
Because it's already there, so they're not losing any parking. And they hate to see him not be able to rent his building. And you know what I mean? It's just for business.
So that that is something that could be offered up, I think. Scott, Darla? So I mean, that's something that they can certainly consider, and we can take that back. But that's that's a valid point as well. Darla.
I have to agree with Tim. I mean, if there's already curb cuts, and the only thing different about the business is that people would not have to get out of their car. I think that I think people should be grandfathered in. If you've already got an entrance and an exit, however, and they might not even be able to design it so that, you know, it's a smooth flow. But yeah, you're right. You don't want to you don't want to preclude people from having a business there. But it's just the ones where they could go off onto a side street, go off the side street, you know? But if there's already if there's already curb cuts in there, I don't, like you said, it's not taking away any parking.
I don't have a problem with that personally.
We gotta take each, you know, we're gonna look at each thing, you know, on its own. Thing is, like Bob's case, at the option cars are entering, I think that's safer if they're entering. It's when they're driving out, when they're leaving, I think, is when they're.
This says he couldn't put a drive-through in there.
Only if it only if traffic came and went off the side street.
It does get a little bit difficult as a safety aspect as well because you're crossing, you know, sometimes two to four lanes of traffic, depending on which way you're going to get back out. And you see two and four lanes of traffic in other areas, but usually there's like a a boulevard or a median kind of in the middle where you can't just cross all lanes of traffic. Sheriff Chief?
If I might add, I guess I'd have more of a concern opposite of what Bill brought up, where I would have less concern if they were exiting onto Washington. But now if they're going the opposite direction and say you have something such as a Starbucks, those things are massive, crazy, busy, and now you'd have all that backup going where? Back out to Washington Street. So I couldn't imagine the the traffic congestion we would have.
I just was curious, could you enter from the side street and act, oh, you don't want them exiting on Washington?
That's the intent of the ordinance, enter or no enter or exit.
But it would be okay to enter? Is that?
No, enter or exit, neither, as written. I hear what you're saying. It gets really complicated. Okay, there's an existing curb cut. Ought to be good for something. Can it be used only for ingress? Can it be only used for exiting? Can it be used for either? And then it's situational, and the conditional use gets a little squishy. A Starbucks, and I'm not pecking on them, I just see the kind of lines they have in our neighboring community at their location. You know, that might be materially different than some other professional office, say, that had a parking lot that saw relatively few cars per day coming through. So.
I see.
More of a question. So could, as written, would this serve as guidance? And then if somebody really wanted to put something else in there that would go before the planning commission because they'll need a conditional use permit? And then consider the public safety concerns? Can that be part of that decision then?
I'll defer that to Jack. I don't think that it would.
If you're talking about making making it available if a conditional use permit is obtained, I mean, it could be written that way. Typically, the use permit would go through Plan Commission, I think, prior to to coming to the council. Would do that. Otherwise, what they'd have to do, if if the if the ordinance by its terms excluded that, they'd basically ask for an amendment and ask to change the ordinance. But conditional use permit would give you that flexibility. We just have to be careful about finding the standards whereby a permit would be entered or withheld.
Conditional use permit basically is where we are now. Any drive, I think the old ordinance slightly is a drive-in facilities, drive-through facilities, do require a conditional use permit. But then you've got the overlay of the state law that now, I can't quote it chapter and verses. You need pretty uniform standards for granting or denying.
Yeah, you'd probably have to figure out, certainly you don't want to do it by necessarily by type of business. Like, say, everybody but Starbucks could get a conditional conditional use permit or that sort of thing. But it might be might be possible to formulate something which would give an indication of, you know, when traffic would be too busy or that could be a task, but I don't want to say it's impossible.
Not impossible, but you wouldn't necessarily recommend it.
Let's call up the language. Do we have the language of the current ordinance and have a look at that if you like?
While you look that up, I'll ask for any other comments from council. Does anybody have anything else? Are they kind of waiting on this? All right, we'll wait for city attorney to look that up. But I mean, that, yeah, I mean, if you have an additional curb or you have that curb cut cut already, it kind of makes sense. But at the same time, you got to look at the safety side of things as well. And crossing over that many lanes of traffic during a busy time, especially during summer, or if you get a busy drive-through in there, you get ten cars trying to enter off Washington Street, you could be backed up all the way to the stop and go by QuickTrip at any one one given business trying to get on off of Washington Street.
And honestly, the other alternative, of course, would be to look at changing the limits of this. The northerly couple of blocks, I mean, I can see some, you know, redevelopment potential on Mr. Petrowski's property. It's not the way the Unimart across the way, it's a block from the north, is going. That's not going to have drive-through. But either, you know, either loosen this up to allow for existing driveways curb cuts or keep the language and pull pull the boundaries in.
I don't know if I understand it correctly. It seems to be a modification to subsection K.
Yes.
At the right place, candy, ice cream, and soft drinks store. This must be somewhere else. And one twenty-four B one.
A subsection K.
Okay.
K, not the relevant section here?
Or conditional use? Ah, here we go.
It's under conditional uses.
Okay. All right, that's so it's two. So we'd be repealing that and creating.
Section one, just above K, is hereby repealed and recreated to read as follows.
Okay. I've been business establishment offering goods or services directly waiting and parked motor vehicles, I say.
Right, and that's where we changed it to add reference to drive-through and stopped motor vehicles because the old language, you could almost take to be describing an old car hop type A and W or something. Providing services to customers in parked cars.
Yeah, that is pretty broad language. Perhaps it that would be, if if the council wants to do this, perhaps it could be strengthened and made more specific by mentioning factors which would be taken into consideration in granting the conditional use permit, things like traffic, safety, that nature. Terminating other imperatives to be granted, the city, the council should take into consideration.
Safety, maybe.
Increase in in traffic or.
Curb cut already there, so we're not getting rid of any.
That should be one of the factors, too, if you have to put in. I I think I think it could be done. That's all I'm saying, if you want.
Leaving the door open somehow for properties that already have curb cuts wouldn't be fatal to this. I don't think we can craft it on the fly tonight. It would need to go back and be public and public notice given properly. I mean, that that would still essentially rule out the sixteen hundred block. Seventeen hundred blocks isn't much of a question because it's city-owned on both sides with parks. It would rule out the eighteen hundred block because there are no curb cuts there onto Washington Street.
I think you have such some language even in this, it's in the early in the redlined document
Yeah.
Which talks about appearance and safety and things of that nature. No use would create things like.
Yeah, I was gonna, you know, we've been talking about this on and off for a while, and I was always kind of under the impression that it had to do with curb cuts, that we didn't really want any more going out onto Washington Street. And it's like I said before, if there's already a business or a building that's got an entrance and an exit that are going into that property, I don't, you know, it's it's free will. I mean, whoever owns that property, if they want to sell it to, you know, whoever, that's kind of up to them. They're not creating a new cut. And I I I think that no more curb cuts, no more, you know, don't take away parking, don't, you know. We don't want to add to any possibilities of an accident with pedestrians. But that's as far as I would go personally. It's just no new curb cuts, no new ins and outs.
Or anything as opposed to picking up, picking out or picking on drive-throughs? Just no new curb cuts, period?
I mean, there's there's other places in town where they might not have a drive-through. They might have a parking lot, and people are going in and out pretty rapidly, and you're still having that that traffic, and it doesn't seem to be a problem. You know, and if Starbucks were to come in, you know, they're going to want a generous sized lot. And something like over at the at the dock, that would be a perfect place for them. You know, they're not gonna they're not going to want a small little area, but I I don't think it's really fair if there's already an in and out.
And I understand this wouldn't preclude the dock. We all know that.
I'm just saying that that would that would be a great place for them. But no, and the and the thing is, is that we don't know what their traffic is going to be. We there might be a business that comes in, we think, oh, okay, they're going to only have a handful of customers, and they might be the busiest ones. So I think it's really hard to pick and choose. I don't think you should pick and choose. And and no, I'm I'm comfortable with you, no new curb cuts, no no new driveways. And that's it.
And then perhaps, I'm not to put words in your mouth, but maybe, and then to suggest some standards for granting or not granting conditional uses for drive-through facilities?
No, I think that's that's fair.
You know, we're estimating a gazillion cars a day, well.
Right, but I don't know. To me, this particular ordinance should be they should be more focused on on curb cuts, really.
And I think some on safety, just because of four lanes of traffic downtown. We don't have a median that that precludes you from going across all those lanes and hooking a left or a right. And I mean, you could really, I mean, in summer, we're more busy, obviously, than we are in winter. And with a lot of things happening downtown, we could really be second guessing ourselves so we at least don't look at the safety aspect of it. And maybe the safety aspect comes back from DP W and Chief Minor, and they say, you know what? The traffic council look good. Things look okay. Well, let's grant it. And maybe they come back and say, hey, I got some real concern.
And I think that's fair. I mean, it is a case-by-case basis. We're not having a blanket, big, no, you can't, you know.
Just because it is a downtown, we want to kind of keep the feel of a downtown and not flood it with a bunch of drive-throughs that are, you know, bringing down the amount of parking we have, ruining the experience of those that like to walk the shops and bike and all the other stuff in the, obviously, in the street, not on the sidewalks. But you still got to look out for all the the bike pedestrians as well. Is that kind of what you're you're looking at or not looking at as far as, do you want to include safety?
Well, I think, yeah, well, safety is definitely a concern, but that could come up at Plan Commission.
Hmm, right, no, but we want to, I think Jack really wants to get that in the ordinance because what he's saying is conditional use permits from the state, they want you to have a reason, a backing of a reason to say no and yes, and not so, well, yeah, I don't want you because you're you're this, and I want you because you're that.
Okay, no, point taken. And yeah, I'm I'm good with that. Look at it case by case, but to me, this should be more about, we don't want, we're not, we're not cutting our sidewalk for you, and we're not losing spaces. That's more how I had interpreted this would go.
How does everyone else on council feel about coming back with something like that? Yeah? No one's really opposed to that? Okay.
Planning Commission can revisit this and hammer.
And Greg?
Essentially the same issue, I think.
You and your staff are tasked with that.
Yeah, and we will distribute it again to Main Streets Design Committee and other appropriate groups for their feedback before it comes back to council.
We have a motion.
Assume right now, maybe it also includes a provision on widening existing driveway cuts, too.
Yes, yes, we don't want any more cutting of the curb, period, to widen and or other.
Another way to look at it.
So there's a motion on the table as we discuss this, so we need to rescind that motion, correct?
Well, it could be withdrawn if if that is okay with the council and move.
And so the mover and the second?
I will draw that motion, my previous motion.
You're good with that as well? Okay, so then we can end the public hearing, and we can move on to number seven, which is input from the, yes.
Maybe it would be appropriate that I have a motion and a vote to refer the matter back to the Plan Commission for an ordinance that instead focuses on prohibition of new curb cuts or the or the enlargement of existing curb cuts in the in the same area, if that's what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I I think it's good to have that kind of affirmative action by the council.
Yeah, I'd rather that than go back to the Plan Commission, just say, yep, they said nope.
Okay, so we're going to look for a motion to send this back to Plan Commission with the direction given by council to amend parts of this ordinance to accept the existing curb cuts to take a look at safety and other potential hazards that could come up when approving a conditional use permit. Sound good? Looking for emotion on such. Thank you, Bill, seconded by Bonnie. Thank you. Discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none, this is just a recommendation. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, and Plan Commission is tasked with this, and they will report back to us. On to number seven, input from the public. Anyone wishing to address the council on something that's on this agenda or something they'd like to see on a future agenda? Please step up to the podium my right, your left, state your name and address for the record, input from the public. All right, seeing none, we're going to go on to eight, which is council communications. Any council? Any council member have letters or other communications from citizens they wish to share with the rest of council? Bonnie?
I got, I have a letter from, from somebody, but I don't know who it is. And they said, I'm gonna just read parts of it, but not all of it. I'm writing to you in the hope you can assist in cleaning up the south side of Two Rivers. She gave, or he, she gave some addresses. And, um, these properties and others like them bring, bring down the property values of the whole neighborhood. I don't. I hope she's listening, I know it's difficult and I don't even understand that either. Why the same property owner can keep on and keep on and keep on. I mean, I've tried to explain that once you clean it up, they can sin again. And it's a new sin, so they have to go to confession again. But I just, um. I don't, something really should be done.
If you care to share that with staff that is charged with enforcing the codes, we could pull up any history on those properties listed and. There, there may be, there may or may not be appropriate explanations for each of them.
I didn't look at the one, but the, uh, one of them I, there were two and one of them I think is a habitual one. But I will double check it. The thing is, even if it, even if these happen to be two new ones, there are habitual ones. Throughout the city, it's really not only on the south side. I'm just saying that it's like the grass cutting. They don't do it and they let the city do it and they never, it's like these same people never cut their grass or never shovel.
We have changed the mowing ordinance, so, so the first time it's, uh, the first time it's mowed, the second time there shall be a penalty. I can honestly, and again, we'd be happy to look at those and respond. There are cases where something ends up going to municipal court and months elapsed before it's adjudicated. And even if there's a fine, person turns around and offends again. And, uh, there's a process and sometimes that process. Time, time isn't on the enforcing agency's side and that's frustrating if you're living in that neighborhood and suffering. We wait a long time for spring and summer around here and then, you know, the snow melts and you're looking at the same mass or a new one. Uh, you saw before, so we'll be happy to try to address those, Bonnie.
Bonnie, that, that's a great analogy you had there, um, it was actually, um, and, and it's true. I've called in numerous properties, sometimes the same properties, because I got complaints about certain properties. And, and I called them in multiple times and, um, the PD does a good job of getting down there and taking a look at it and it gets cleaned up and you're right. They just go back and offend again. And I, I don't know if it's a matter of a, a lot of court time, whi- which is possible. Or if we have to get more severe on the penalties that we put upon them. Uh, to make sure that they aren't continuing to, uh, to re-offend. Because there are some of the same properties that I get emails and phone calls about. I can name the one of them for sure that I get phone calls about probably once a month. And it, it gets frustrating for the neighbors around there as well. And I drive past the place and I see the same thing. Police department goes past, they see the same thing, they make them clean it up, they clean it up, probably give them a citation. But as Greg speaks, it, it probably is sitting in municipal court.
I'm sorry, not making excuses, we do, we are trying more of late to use the chronic nuisance ordinance that council passed about two years ago. Where if there are three offenses of record in any twelve month period. Uh, additional sanctions can be taken after sitting down and working on a corrective action plan and the things the ordinance requires by way of due process. Cause we've got some, yeah, and, and they've been cited, they've been cited. They may bring it up to a minimal standard and then, yeah, they sin again.
So, I mean, maybe Bonnie, the best thing is to tell them to just keep calling. Ju- just keep doing it, I mean, I do, because it, it is, it destroys a neighborhood, nobody wants to live next to it, nobody wants to look at it. And, and I agree, it, it, it's terrible, there are some houses like that. And it's gotta stop, so, I mean, if we call them in more and more, maybe we can get, get them on the chronic nuisance and. You know, start whipping some stuff in the shape, because it's too bad that that has to happen.
You know, I'm just wondering if, um. If the city, is the city proactive in, in seeing these properties, seeing the potential problems or are we more complaint driven?
Complaint driven from my knowledge.
Could we be a little bit more proactive, maybe with our CSO or our inspections person?
I'll let Chief Minar to explain that, but I know the CSO has a lot that I believe she's tasked, tasked with, including. Being the only dog enforcement officer, I believe, right?
Um, yeah, she is a humane officer, but.
Humane officer.
Yeah, and she's got plenty on her belt, um, I would say that inspections and. Our CSO and Elizabeth and our fire department and us are very proactive in as much as we can possibly do and including our city manager. Um, what we have done is improve on the heftier penalties for code enforcement violations. As Greg mentioned with, uh, with mowing, for instance, being one of those. Uh, we're also moving to make other changes, I've had numerous meetings with Elizabeth. Elizabeth has been spearheading from more of the inspections department, I would, I would say. Um, working with me and now we're looking at other places with the fire department for chronic nuisance, that's a big one. But again, that is, that is a real pain as far as how much you have to go through. Um, to get it to the point of municipal court and then when it passes municipal court before we can actually take action and clean those properties up. It goes through circuit court. As you guys all know from when we were talking with the Metro Drug Officer. When it gets hung up in circuit court, unfortunately, that's not the biggest concern the courts have right now is municipal code violations in cities and villages. Their main concern is getting through the criminal trials that they're already stacked up two years behind. Um, so that's just the reality of that portion of it. I will say that I think Elizabeth, we have, what, at least a half dozen right now that are either. In circuit court or that we're actively pursuing right now for chronic nuisances alone. Um, and that's not to mention the ones that are already on our radar.
As far as municipal court, can we look at increasing the fines? Cause that's a shorter process, because it's done in-house.
And I think our fines right now are like something, I mean, with a wide range, however, that doesn't, uh. Really allow us, you know, the push of, of our municipal court to necessarily take the highest end of that. So I think they, the low end is five thou, uh, five hundred and I'm not sure where the top end of that is. Um, but I, and I'm not sure how they're playing out.
I think it's fifteen hundred on the high end, if it's the general penalty provision, but. I think the language of that ordinance allows for daily. Position, but again, that's gonna be in the discretion of the judge.
Yeah, and, and as of now, I would say we're probably on the later end of that. As far as where that discretion lies and I can't.
If we raise the minimum though, there should be a minimum set that he can't go below, correct?
Yes, if you impose a, a specific. Well, I think there is one in the general penalty, but it's quite low, as I recall.
Maybe can you get that information back to us to maybe take a look at? To see, to see, to see what the minimum is?
I think, I think the, the struggle that we also balance and I, I will say it is, um, and normally in these cases. Um, not necessarily for the chronic offender, um, but what we are always looking for is compliance with. You know, the citizen to bring the property up to compliance, educate them, get them in compliance. Um, even with the chronic nuisance, that's the ultimate goal, unfortunately. That's why it's set forth that they have the abatement plan that they set up with me or I sign off on that says what they're going to do to bring those violations into compliance. And then they fall back out of that. However, if they fail, that's where then it has to go through the court system and at some point we may have to take over their property and clean it up. Um, and then charge them for all those expenses.
So I had, uh, or Jack just looked it up, the minimum we have set before us for first offenses, five dollars is the minimum. That the judge can go down to is five dollars.
Second offense is not less than ten dollars.
Second offense is not less than ten dollars. So I, I guess maybe bringing those up to a much higher minimum. Can help deter some of these people from doing it in the first place, much less again. And that, that's not a fault of anyone on staff, it's just something that, that's there and been there and maybe just needs to be revisited.
It'd be interesting to look over the last couple of years and see what the municipal court has doled out in the way of penalties. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have a five dollar penalty for anything on the books at this point, but it'd be interesting to see.
Has, has the new grass cutting ordinance work, has it been working?
I, I think that would be more of a parks and rec issue, I mean, we've definitely, well, I mean, whoever's cutting parks and rec or. Or DPW as far as how much that's gone up or down. Um, as far as compliance, I, I don't know that it changes a whole lot and it, it's better than it was, but I don't know what the numbers are.
Can get those for you.
Raised the fees quite a bit. That was one area where.
That is that and snow, or was it snow, I thought snow we raised.
Well, we're hard pressed to charge more than the city's actual cost when it comes to cost recovery. But then we made after the second offense in any growing season for grass.
The fine.
A fine, and we need to make sure we're levying those fines.
And that, and that's DPW as you probably know, and so that's one of the difficulties that we're facing in that it's multiple departments. And so dealing and coordinating those, these efforts is one of the struggles because of all the other responsibilities, but back to your point. With respect to the fines, um, one of the things in working together with police, uh, we, I have looked at and talking with Ben, Chief Ben, that. We need to look at, uh, probably looking at reconfig, reconfiguring this ordinance. And looking at the fines, looking at the way that we can streamline it, I think that's another thing that I'd like to discuss. With the multiple departments, because it's difficult to get to all of these items through all of these bureaucratic things that we have to do. Um, so that's also something that is affecting the timeline in terms of implementing improvement, so.
If you could get something back to us for our agenda, I think there's consensus among the council members up here, at least I've taken a consensus to that from what I've been hearing. That, that we would like to see the fines and the streamlining process. Uh, a way to implement that and get that before council to vote on that so we can raise those, those minimum fines, Tracy.
Perhaps maybe in a work session so that we can have. Since it's multiple, multiple departments. So that we're, you know, not here until ten o'clock and people are like, when do you get to my thing?
If we can get a, a work session agenda on this, obviously not this month.
As I was saying, I'm sitting here thinking the June work session would make sense.
Probably pretty good, that gives us ample time to, to take a look at that.
I can tell you, you know, today, this weekend, I drove by a property on Eleventh Street, just west of Madison. Take a drive by on the way home tonight and didn't give an address, just Eleventh West of Madison. Took pictures, sent them to the code enforcement officer and her response was it had been. Forget if it was last Tuesday or Wednesday, the property owner was contacted, there's a deadline out there. So sometimes these things are in process. And obviously if you as council members hear of or see any of these. Get that information to staff, I don't care if it's our office or. Code enforcement or police non-emergency ASAP, so we get engaged on it.
Yeah, the, the fastest way I think is to go straight through our police department, so one, we already have that in our, in our record system. And we're addressing it immediately. Um, we had even just Facebook chatter over the, the last couple of days that I was already addressing just from seeing it on Facebook chatter as. Couple of you council members would already know.
And if any of you can tell me what's wrong with that fence from driving by, in case you know the one he's referencing, let me know. Cause I couldn't figure it out from a drive by.
I would agree.
Sorry, had to say that.
In addition, from another proactive standpoint, um, as Bonnie knows on Triad, that's one of the things that Triad does too on a volunteer basis is we give them a. A department unmarked vehicle and four of them drive around and they, they call it city cleanup and they do that quarterly. Um, and that helps out find a bunch of these little code violations that maybe we aren't even seeing. Um, and they'll pick a section of town and go through and basically come back and provide that all to our officers and our CSOs. So that's another one of those proactive approaches. But again, I agree with Elizabeth that, um, and I think we're doing it right in trying to streamline and trying to get ahead and start attacking these chronic nuisances. Um, as Elizabeth would share, there's a couple that are on my radar that I'm concerned about that are gonna get worse. And I want to nip those in the butt before they get there.
And Greg is real good at answering his phone FYI, um, I've called him a couple of times after receiving complaints on the weekend. And he's gotten the, uh, shift commander out there ASAP and he's got a nice direct line that way.
Don't be shy about reaching out.
And he's able to, to get those guys down there pretty quick to at least take a look, take pictures and, and get the process started. We've done that multiple times over the weekend where I've received complaints and I just. Shot it right back over to Greg and he took care of it with the shift commander and, uh, getting out there, so. That way you can at least see, they can see the problem. As it is now, not a couple of days later where maybe it got cleaned up or, or what have you, because it should never look like that ever, so, just an FYI. Any other communications, Bonnie, that was a good one, you struck a nerve. Anybody else? Yes, Tim?
I was contacted by a small business owner in town and they were curious, considering they no longer live in Two Rivers, but they own property in Two Rivers and they. How do they get a voice? Because they vote for his council member. Because they're not from, they don't live in Two Rivers anymore, they were just kind of curious, how are they supposed to?
We genuinely let pretty much almost anyone talk wh- wh- when they want to come up and address council, but as for. Voting for us, I think that's more of a state thing where you can't, because you don't live in this jurisdiction. Cause I mean, I guess you could vote, if you lived in Manitowoc, had a business here, you could be having two votes for state races as well.
Tying voting rights to property ownership kind of went by the boards with poll taxes and.
Yeah, but as far as having a voice in, in front of us, absolutely, I don't believe Bob lives in Two Rivers, I think he, he, he lives, I think Bob lives in Manitowoc. I'm not mistaken, but he still has, he still has a voice, he has a property here. There's some people that don't have property here that even speak. So, yeah, absolutely.
I would just add and encourage them to join TRBA or be a part of Main Street or, you know, wherever they might be located, just to. Participate in these organizations to voice their concerns or, or be more proactive in that if they're not. Um, and encourage them and of course call Greg or myself and we can help if we can.
I certainly want to hear from, I mean, businesses are huge, whether you live in Two Rivers or not, w- we want you here, your business, you as a person. Um, we're certainly not pushing them away by no means, at least I know I'm not, I would, I'd welcome any of their feedback, of course. Good question, because some people may not know that. Anybody else, council communications? All right, then we're gonna move on to number nine, council reports from boards, commissions or committees, anyone have anything they'd like to report on? Darla?
Number first?
Oh, okay. Um, for Main Street, um. There is a, we all know there's been a supply chain concerns, um, but right now they're less of a concern than during or after the pandemic. And this is having to do with our downtown businesses. Um, but one thing that Jason had heard from local businesses is that some suppliers are no longer allowing smaller quantity orders. Um, making it difficult for smaller shops to carry product lines that sell at the big box stores. So it's gonna, I mean, they already have a tough time, um, we need to patronize them. And we really have to support them, but I mean, they're always up against. You know, issues like this that are, are very difficult for them to stay in business or to be a viable business. So just keep that in mind and just shop locally, please. Um, and also, um, the National Main Street. So that there is a big emphasis put on businesses owned by women, minorities and veterans. And they are seeing more of these types of businesses opening. What's important about this is that if, um, a business, a business owner falls into one of these categories. This can be helpful when applying for grants or other business assistance programs. So, um, if you are a business owner in Two Rivers and you fall into one of these categories, get in touch with Main Street. And he can see what kind of grants might be out there to help you out. And then also, um, just so everyone knows, it's National Craft Beer Week. Get your beer on. Um, and we have volunteer opportunities, we need volunteers for the car show, which is June twenty third and twenty fourth. And Washington House is opening back up on May twenty seventh, a Saturday. And if you want to know what their, obviously if you want to know what their days of operation and hours of operation are, go to their, you know, you can call them or go to their, their site. So that's what's happening there, um, what's, you know. Keep an eye out for upcoming banner, uh, banner art and, um, our yarn bomb, which has got a lot of participants. In fact, we had to expand our range, um, to, to add more intersections in because it was really popular. And then for the EAB, it's, we're still, you know, working on the same stuff that I've talked about in the past. What's gonna be coming up though is we are gonna be updating our EAB mission statement and objectives. And there's a suggestion that we go to bi-monthly meetings, so I'll let you guys know about what happens with that in the near future. We have two new, very good potential grant opportunities. Um, which would be very beneficial to the community, so fingers crossed on that. The winter educational series, we have one more, um, presentation, which is actually this week on Thursday. And it's, we're going to have four of the UW Manitowoc Master Gardener Volunteers presenting. And their subject is going to be, or subjects are going to be the value of pollinator gardens and the basics of creating one. Um, the Collins Marsh Garden and an overview of downtown Manitowoc plantings. So that one we expect to have, this will probably be the most well-attended one that we have for this, um, for this season. And we have locked in our, our, uh, 2023 through 2024 winter series dates. And I'm not going to go through them right now, but one thing I wanted to say is that we're already looking at subjects for this coming winter. Please get in touch with EAB. And if you have, um, some topics that you would like to, you know, suggest that we have presentations on, we're all ears. So just get in touch with us and let us know what you think would be a good topic. And that's what I've got.
Darla, oops, has the deadline passed for front yard garden applications?
No, I, I kind of expanded it to the end of this month.
Okay.
So, yeah, so.
Are there any, uh,
I, I don't know, man.
Through the process as yet? None thus far. Okay.
You know, we got.
You don't know until you try.
Right. Well, and the thing is too, is that we were really late on the promotional part of it. Mainly because it took so long to even get it to pass through plan commission and pass through here. So, um, just to, uh, one thing I'd like to put out there right now is that if this doesn't really go well this year, I would ask that the council take into consideration that we give it another shot next year and we can start promoting it really early so that people can really pre, pre-plan. So just kind of keep that in mind. But in the meantime, they still have time to get us in their applications.
All right. Thank you. Scott?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things, um, for Public Works Committee. Um, our first meeting was back on May 3rd and I guess one of the highlights from that is a lot of the miscellaneous concrete work on streets is, will start happening, I think last week into this week. Um, so that's good. So some of those pothole, those bigger sections, um, will be taken care of. I know it's Forest Avenue was done already, so. Drive that way quite a bit. Uh, so that's something good that's happening. Um, also in our packets for tonight was formal items I, uh, the no parking restrictions for spaces on the West Side Mason Street. Matt did hand out, um, information for that to us this evening on a memo. Um, in the Public Works Committee meeting we had right before city council meeting, um, we agreed with his recommendations. Representative from Christina's Bakery was there as well. Um, she would like to see some more open parking spaces there. There's a lot of no parking there. I think that was probably from the stoplights that were there years and years ago, probably, but there's no real reason to have those.
And the church that's no longer operating as a church.
And with, um, the high lift there too, there's some spots around there too that that she could have there. And then, uh, finally, I just, if I can go back to council communications real quick, because I forgot one.
Yep.
Um, the banners hung up in downtown. I don't know if that was Parks and Rec or people.
Electric utility with school staff, right? Yeah.
Thank you very much. I have a personal interest. My daughter's graduating. So thank you guys very much for putting those up. Um, a lot of the kids, my daughter talked to today, a lot of the kids are excited to see those up. So thank you guys for putting that up. That's it.
All right. Anybody else? All right. See you none. We're going to go to number 10, City Managers Report. Greg?
Uh, yes, we do have an invited guest tonight, uh, the call of you know Pamela Stevens. Pam is here representing American Legion Post 165 and the American Legion Auxiliary, also VFW Post 1248. I want to make sure I got that right. Uh, for poppy sales. PJ, the floor is yours and you better have your money out, guys. I warned you.
Memorial Day is coming up. Um, we will be, uh, distributing poppies at the, uh, several gas stations. Um, and, um, both grocery stores from the 24th through the 29th. So if you see somebody there, it'll either be an auxiliary member, a veteran, um, both either from the VFW or from the American Legion. But right now I'm going to start off this month early.
I wouldn't say, but you know, we're auxiliary milling. And this is from Bill and me. I gave you money. She keeps it. Oh, because we were short last year, so.
Yes, congratulations you too. I know. Oh, God.
Yeah, we can't touch them.
I found it. And, uh, this year there is a bulletin for Memorial Day. So help yourself there at the table over there.
Thank you. And again, for the folks not here tonight, those poppy sales are May 24th to 29th. At Pick and Save Piggly Wiggly, Quick Trip, Shoreline Credit Union, over at, uh, Patsy's Highway 42 Mobile and Nikki's Good Eats and Treats. So, uh, plenty of opportunities for this, uh, longstanding program that, uh, that benefits various veterans programs. Thank you PJ. And congratulations on your graduation this past weekend. Seems like, seems I heard about that somewhere. Uh, moving on with my city managers report, uh, just, uh, by the way, the, uh, the, uh, pavers for the area in front of the Schmidt Brothers stage, at least three, maybe four fields of them have been laid out by committee volunteers and city staff. So they will be perfectly, uh, or as near as, near perfectly as possible arrayed, uh, there. Thanks for those efforts. So you should see those going in, uh, this week. Uh, we also made a field decision last week to add one more band of light colored concrete beyond what you see in this photo. So it's going to give a little extra room to keep those benches back away from the paver fields and give, that was done after consulting with Blake, our project architect. So things are coming along there. Uh, staffing updates, uh, fire chief, the police and fire commission conducted interviews at its meeting last week, Thursday. There'll, there's an announcement pending. We'll make that official here at council at the meeting on June 5th. Uh, Public Works Maintenance Record, uh, what did I say? Worker, not wrecker. Public Works Maintenance Worker, uh, still in the process of reviewing, uh, applications. Their applications remain open. And firefighter paramedic, uh, the department held interviews on the 10th. I believe there was discussion of the applicants with police and fire commission in closed session last week, and there will, there is a selection pending there, uh, to fund the additional position authorized by council earlier this year. Uh, in the police department, one of two vacancies has been, um, filled with the appointment of Jacob Schweigl, and he will get a formal introduction at the council meeting on June 5th. Really great addition to TRPD. And, uh, looks like, uh, well, he, he already has a professional background in, in police work here in Wisconsin. Uh, probably the next candidate, as, as chief, uh, mentioned at the last meeting, will require going through the academy. So, uh, but again, uh, top-notch recruits as we've seen in recent years.
As far as, uh, DPW?
Yep.
Wasn't that closed or is that, because I know you just said that was open yet.
The, uh, there was an offer extended and, and that didn't work out. It was declined by the candidate.
So reopened?
Have we formally reopened Amanda or, uh? Okay.
Okay.
Thought we had it, but, uh, we, uh, somebody apparently got an offer they couldn't refuse. Um, Central Park West, uh, last week saw the completion of the concrete work, uh, done by, on force account by city crews. Uh, the contractor, actually subcontractor Martel Construction, working for Vinton, the prime contractor, completed the concrete walking loop that will be overlaid with the skating loop. Uh, that skate, skating loop will have some slope to it, uh, along the west and south sides. Bear in mind when you see that out there, uh, that was in the plan and it is constructed per plan. That hit me today and I had to double check it. I was scratching my head just a little bit, but, uh, it is per plan. Uh, concrete has been poured around the water feature and equally important, if you want to keep that concrete in place, it passed a pressure test last week, uh, with, uh, with the city's inspectors. So that's looking good. And, uh, the stonework on the pavilion building continues. And the city has a contractor that will be doing the stonework around the uprights on the Schmidt Brothers stage. That should start shortly. This coming week, uh, getting closer to final site grading. Uh, tomorrow at a progress meeting, they'll talk about the tree planting. That's probably the first of next week around the 22nd. The trees are in town and in storage. They were delivered along with the trees that got planted on 17th and Madison Streets last week. Uh, sound system is partway along. Hearings this week, okay? Uh, light pole installation, I know at least one of the ornamental light poles is already up. And the stage masonry installation, not noting here, not noted here, but, uh, actually some of the street restoration work has started at the south end of the block. Uh, the, the new narrower opening onto West Park Street. Yep, yep. So it's coming along over there.
I looked at it over the weekend and it looks awesome. It's so neat to see this whole project just come together. The whole loop was, looked like it was poured this weekend. So that was, or la- last week, I saw it this weekend. So yeah, it's, it's really.
And you can really see how those ceiling walls are going to function as far as sort of, not a hundred percent, but pretty much containing those areas.
Yep.
And, uh, I tell, the community feedback has been so positive. We're, I would expect in the next two weeks, I shouldn't predict, but we're, we're in the neighborhood of $94,000 in paver donations. I think we're going to top $100,000 from the community just for pavers for the project. It's, the response has been phenomenal. Uh, uh, in terms of total donations, uh, donation goal of course was 800,000. Today we stand at just over 815,000 dollars. And, uh, that, we're over goal and that's good because we have some extra costs too. Um, I'm estimating we've got about another 75,000 or so that we need. We are waiting on WEDC's Vibrant Spaces Grant announcements. We, those were supposed to be made official the first week in May. We've not, uh, if, nothing official has been released at, at this point on the, on the grants. So stay tuned. And there you see, is that Andrew? I know Ross and Andrew were out there. Uh, the, uh, it's not real dramatic, but you can see the thermometer has burst through the top, which is always, always a good thing unless it releases mercury, in which case you have a hazmat situation, but for, for this it's good. Uh, over on, uh, Lincoln Street, Water Main is completed up to, from 17th up to 20th. Uh, they're still working on sanitary laterals and the public side water service laterals. Private side inspections are in scheduled and completed. Any work on the private side stuff yet, guys? Actually some private side work underway. So, um, that's right. That's, it's my next bullet point, I guess. So, uh, that's coming along pretty good. We're still hoping for a completion by late August, which around here is pretty good. When you can have a project wrapped up like that. La- one of last year's major street reconstructs, 17th, uh, street saw 40 some new trees, uh, go in last week. They came right from the nursery where they were dug on Friday, Saturday and were planted by Creton Landscaping on Monday. They also were able to plant another seven or eight trees down on Madison, completing work um, along that street, which was rebuilt in, uh, 19th to 22nd rebuilt back in 2021. We did have a few Facebook inquiries. We have five or six trees left over that we are going to be deploying. First come, first served, uh, to the people that made those requests. Happily, most of them were people with wide terraces and not overhead lines. Council has been very supportive of reinvigorating our urban forestry program, which has been lacking for a number of years. This year's activities include planting 52 street trees, over 30 park trees. And that's just, uh, well, that's taking into account Central Park and a very gen- generous donation that came from Silver Creek Nursery, trees that went in, uh, in the last couple of weeks. And, um, also we, seeing the benefits from the DNR Urban Forestry Grant. Mike, have they started the inventory yet, you know? Okay. We're, we're hoping that starts real soon with the contracted, uh, urban forestry, uh, inventory. Uh, Washington Park Tennis and Pickle Wall Courts, I don't have a specific update, but the contractor was out when we had that warm spell in April and inspected the site. We know we're high on their list and now that the weather seems to have finally broken, we're expecting to see completion by mid-June unless monsoons set in. Uh, the, the major thing now is coating the surface and then marking the, the courts, uh, the fence fencing is in. Uh, over on Zlatnik Drive, that was a contract awarded by the council earlier this year for milling and asphalt resurfacing. Public Works crews have removed and replaced some curb and gutter on 18th between Garfield and Zlatnik. They are coming back a ways onto 18th Street with the project. If you go down there, the, the start point is delineated. And again, weather permitting, the paving gods with us, uh, we're hoping to see Northeast in as soon as Wednesday of this week for that asphalt work. By the way, I didn't take a slide of it, but did stop out, uh, by the beach today. The snow fence is all coming down. Uh, the, the sand is getting leveled. The beach groomer is out. Uh, the fabric is up on the rotary pavilion. Thank you, Electric Cruise. So, uh, there's sure signs of summer down there. It's good to see our Parks and Rec crews both year round and seasonal at it. And yes, our, our beach groomer will be at it soon. We'll see what he has in store this year on the beach. Uh, we had a very successful kickoff for, um, the, the launch of Explore Two Rivers and the new board for the 501 C6 Tourism Organization. Last week, uh, Brian Dean addressed the group. I had the opportunity to introduce the new, um, nine-member board for Explore Two Rivers Inc. Uh, thanks to the Hamilton Wood Type and Printing Museum for, uh, providing the venue for the event. There were over 70 folks in attendance. Very positive, very well-received and, uh, uh, really, uh, very auspicious uh, kickoff for our new tourism organization. That board will be having its first meeting shortly after Memorial Day. We're, uh, finalizing the bylaws. I think they're finalized now. And, uh, things are moving along on the tourism front. Restrooms have all been put back in service well in advance of our typical goal of Monday before Memorial Day. You may have encountered one that was locked. If you're out in a park, I'll just remind you it was snowing two weeks ago. So, uh, actually this, this is pretty good. Right now we don't have our, uh, park hosts all on, all employed at this point. So, uh, the, the best we can guarantee is they're open from seven to three daily. Uh, later when there are events without an hour in it, uh, scheduled, like, uh, you should be able to get in the restrooms if you're at a Raider game over at Walsh Field, a baseball game. Uh, likewise, uh, the, uh, uh, restroom on Memorial Drive at the Spirit of the Rivers Way site is open for full hours. But there may be some locked up as of 3:00 PM until the week of the 22nd, when we have more of our summer staffing and then they'll all be open 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. So good work, Parks and Rec staff. Uh, leadwater service lateral replacements moving along. Uh, this slide just sort of generically talks about the program. Um, the, we, the staff in the water department has successfully committed all of the funds that were available from 2022 to 23 DNR funding for replacement of leadwater laterals at scattered locations. We came into this year with 29, uh, still to be committed and the work had to be done by the end of June. Good work by the water utility and customer service coordinating that. All that money has committed, been committed. Since 2017, uh, we've seen the removal and replacement over, of over 900 lead or lead containing services. It's still a big job. There are about 1,800 lead service laterals left in use in the city today. Now that might be public side only. It might be private side only. It might be both. Because up until a few years ago, um, in DNR's eyes, we had met the requirement for getting the lead out if it was out up to the end of the public service. That changed along the way. So, um, city staff continues to work diligently to maximize use of the state and federal funding that's available out there to offset the cost of those service replacements, both for the public side, which is a cost borne by ratepayers for the water utility and for the private side, which would, would fall on homeowners, private property owners. And as staff, we are working on a multi-year action plan that'll be presented to the council's Public Works and Utilities Committees in June. That'll include a five-year street reconstruction plan. Uh, to be honest, there's still some moving parts out there as far as the, both public and private side funding. Uh, but we are going to try to present as ambitious a plan as possible with a few footnotes on it saying this all depends on the availability of state and federal funding as we understand it today. Um, and there's just uh actually, have all twenty nine of those been completed now, Andrew? They're okay. So they're committed. They've been inspected. They're installed well in advance to June thirtieth. Uh, just just to highlight, uh, we're definitely post COVID in Parks and Rec. Uh, youth sports are going strong, spring flag constantly with over sixty participants and uh Mike could also give a shout out is which we're happy to do to Port Sandy Bay for providing an end of season pizza party. That's what one of the things that makes Two Rivers a great place to raise a family. Darla mentioned earlier, the um, the informational program uh organized by Advisory Recreation Board at the library. Again, this week, Plant for Pollinators uh with uh Paula Snyder and Marilyn Sturzuski. Plankton and Arcade Greening, all experts in different areas as it relates to pollinators. By the way, if you see a big dead patch of grass just north of the chamber on Memorial Drive, that is a new pollinator garden in the making through joint efforts of the city and Woodland Dunes Nature Center uh along with Stan Tech Engineering. It's a really great looking patch of brown grass right now, but watch for great things to come. Senior Center, speaking of great things that are happening post COVID, um, Senior Center rummage sale coming up on May eighteenth with proceeds to benefit Senior Center activities and programs. And um, last Friday was the one thousand member bash with pizza from Port Sandy Bay, music by Stevie Kees. Uh, all sponsored by Friends of the Senior Center. It looks like there was really great turnout for that uh as well. So things are going very well over at the Senior Center. Uh, upcoming events, uh, first, I think the first major uh softball tournament of the summer, Wisconsin Heat Bash at the Beach, May nineteenth to twenty first over at Vietnam Veterans Park. Uh, if you have um paper that you don't want to just toss out, but want shredded uh as well as electronics, you want to make sure you're disposing of properly for recycling. A secure shred and electronics drive will be held over at the Community House. This coming Saturday, May twentieth, nine A M to one P M. I believe that's uh uh, Two Rivers Octagon is typically an optimist clubber involved in that. So that's coming up and they'll they'll be glad to help you unload whatever you bring in your vehicle. Beach cleanup along Memorial Drive, meeting at the Memorial Drive Wayside North, just north of Columbus Street across from Renee's Chocolates. Uh, this coming Saturday, May twentieth, starting at ten A M, going until noon. And that's cosponsored by the groups uh noted, Friends of the Twin Rivers Watershed, Our Two Rivers Water Trails, Lakeshore National Resources Partnership. And there's a Q R code so you can register. Uh, National Trails Day is Saturday, June third, a couple of weeks out. Kudos to Nancy Nabeck and Woodland Dunes Nature Center for organizing activities in the area here. Uh, oh, and there's also uh breakfast in for na- for National Trails Day, uh breakfast in the park um out at Point Beach, which is to raise monies for a a tracked chair to enhance uh access to the beach for mobility limited folks. And that is a fundraiser organized by the Friends of Point Beach State Forest. Uh, as PJ mentioned earlier, the Legion and V F W actively organizing activities for Memorial Day. Council members invited to participate in the parade, walk or ride in the parade as always. Uh, ceremony on uh, of course, Monday, May twenty ninth. Um, eight, starting at eight A M out in Central Park, the parade steps off at nine. And of course, north on Washington, west on Twenty Second, north on Forest to the Old Cemetery, where um the program at approximately nine thirty follows the parade. We'll get some more reminders out on that. Uh, I'm not going to read all these summer events, but there are several flyers out with complete listings of major summer events downtown and at the beach and elsewhere in the community. As always, go to exploretworivers.com for complete up-to-date information. Um, shared revenues, little text heavy on this one, but this is a big deal. As you know, two meetings back, we talked with our state senator and state rep about this. Since then, we've seen a bill introduced in the legislature. Public hearing was held a week ago last Thursday. I just happened to be over in Madison for an Urban Alliance meeting, so we're able to to view the hearing there and there were some uh local leaders that offered testimony. Uh, understand this is a big deal. We haven't seen an increase in shared revenues in over twenty years. That's a program that accounts for uh, that's three point seven million dollars, so about thirty five percent of our budget, our general fund budget. Uh, this um bill that has been introduced in the assembly would provide an additional two hundred twenty seven million dollars for state shared revenues. All local units, here's the good news, because Two Rivers has really been one of the communities that's more heavily funded under the old long frozen formula, because it was very redistributive and full-service cities that had modest tax bases were rewarded, even though it's been frozen for twenty two years or so or cut a little bit. Uh, the beauty is um, it leaves the base alone, and that's been a big fear we've had over the years. If you change this program, for goodness sakes, leave the base alone. This leaves the base alone and then uh through a a formula included in the legislation uh distributes those additional monies. Uh, the sponsors guaranteed an increase of at least ten percent for any recipient municipalities uh to fund police, fire, EMS, public works and transportation. Future funding would be tied to twenty percent of state sales tax revenue, so one penny out of that five cent sales tax would be dedicated to local aids. It would also fund uh the uh expenditure restraint program. Uh, any future increases, and generally it's going to be increases in sales tax unless you had a really big recession that would, it's not unprecedented to have a decline, but generally it's sales tax revenues increase uh would apply to both that base amount, which is sort of baked in, and the incremental increase. So that's also good news for communities like Two Rivers under this proposal. Under the current A B two forty five language, the increase for the city of Two Rivers would be twelve and a half percent or just over four hundred seventy thousand dollars. Really big number, really good news. To put it in context, it's about four point three percent of our total general fund budget. So it's a really big deal. Uh, city council and staff aren't going to go on a spending spree with this. It's frankly, if it passes in this form, it's going to help us avoid what would be a pretty scary budget situation as we look at twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Um, there's still could be some sticking points like any major legislation, it seems. Uh, there's some strings attached to the proposed increase in funding. As it stands right now, or the initial bill, the governor's threatened to veto. Uh, that probably means that's a negotiating position taken by the governor relative to the legislature. Uh, so there's some real optimism, I can say, among uh legal municipality staff that we're actually going to see something come of this. Speaker Voss has been a strong advocate. Of course, the governor in his state of the state address or his uh budget and his budget uh advocated similarly for an increase in funding for shared revenues. What are some of the strings? And I I don't want to harp on those too much, but we need to be mindful of those. And frankly, I I think should encourage our senator and representative support getting them out of the bill. One would be a prohibition on any locally initiated advisory referendums or referenda, if you prefer. So um, that would preclude local communities from we've never done it, but doing things like saying, well, what do you think about gun control issues? What do you think about the abortion issue? What do you think about state and federal level issues as a means of expressing a pi- an opinion statement to our state and federal reps? Uh, but it also would extend to not having advisory referenda, things that truly could be legislated locally. Uh, we had an advisory referendum a few years ago now on uh, would you support changing the formal government? Said sixty forty, no. And sometimes advisory referenda are nice because the then you can craft a more specific proposal as opposed to going with to the voters with the final answer to be implied. So you know, our legislature put advisory questions on the spring ballot. You might recall those. And they are being cited by legislators as reasons we ought to change laws and change our constitution. So it seems a good compromise here might be at least to still allow local elected officials to put advisory questions on the ballot that relate to the things you all answer to the community on and can vote on. So just a thought. Something that has concerned the towns, not so much cities, but for years, there's there've been efforts to live to make it harder to regulate gravel pits, because most towns, when they start seeing development, have more regulations and prohibitions and restrictions on gravel pits. Well, that might make it a lot harder for the construction industry to get gravel at a reasonable price. The towns benefit quite a lot under this shared revenues bill. One of the strings in this bill is you can't enact any new uh, local ordinances as it relates to gravel mining. And if you have existing rules, you can't make them any tougher. Uh, there's a whole raft of issues specific to the city of Milwaukee, most notably if they are going to increase their sales tax to help address a a pretty dire situation they have with their city pension system. Does it require a vote of the people or can it be voted on by the city council and the county board? That that's their fight to have, as long as it doesn't spoil things for the rest of us. But there are those strings out there that you should be aware of. So uh, bottom line on this, stay tuned. I think there's going to be some give and take still in the legislature. And what happens between the legislature and the governor might make this kind of a white knuckle issue for a while. So that's that. Uh, and that that concludes my report. Again, just a note as we did at the beginning of the meeting. Um, law enforcement officers Memorial Day and Police Week and the the uh supreme sacrifice given by two officers of the T R P D. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to the consent agenda. Under A, we have a presentation of minutes. There are two. City Council Special Meeting of April twelfth, twenty twenty three, and the City Council Meeting of May first, twenty twenty three. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, minutes of meetings, there are seven. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under C, department reports for April twenty twenty three, there are eleven. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. And under D, applications and petitions, we have one. There's an application for a new combination class B beer, class B liquor license application for the period of May sixteenth, twenty twenty three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. For Two Rivers Pub LLC located at eighteen twenty two Adams Street, Rita Rita Del Valle, agent, D B A, Ken's Place. The recommended action is a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of the license. The recommended action for the consent agenda as a whole is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda. Thank you, Tracy. Second by Bonnie. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. On to twelve, which are the city council formal items. Under A, we have a resolution declaring May fifteenth through the twenty first, twenty twenty three as Emergency Medical Services Week. The recommended action is a motion to read and adopt the resolution. Uh, Assistant Chief, are you going to read that?
Are you ready for that? Are you good with that?
I do. All right. So uh Assistant Chief Murak will come on up here and read that for us.
For EMS Week Resolution. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital part of the service to all of our community and citizens. Whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency medical care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rates of those who experience sudden illness and injury. And whereas the emergency medical s- system consists of emergency physicians, nurses, skilled dispatchers, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, first responders, educators, administrators and other. And whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing continuing education to enhance their lifesave saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Two Rivers and recognition of this event do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty first through the twenty seventh as Emergency Medical Services Week. With this year's theme, EMS, where emergency care begins. We encourage the community to observe this week and throughout the year with participation in the appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities.
All right. Thank you very much. Looking for a motion on this. Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second? Second by Darla. Any discussion? This is a resolution. It is a roll call vote. Amanda.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shumulus.
Aye.
Scott Stackmuster.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
All in favor.
All right, going on to B, which is a proclamation naming the week of May fifteenth through the twenty first, twenty twenty three as Police Week and May fifteenth, twenty twenty three as Peace Officers Memorial Day. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the proclamation.
Actually, I apologize.
I was gonna say, are we gonna read that one?
On this and the next two, I'd recommend that council consider uh the reading.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you. I will note that there was an error in the uh date on the agenda. Uh, but that is correct in this uh, this resolution.
And it is corrected on the agenda now.
Okay, so proclamation naming the week of May fourteenth to the twentieth of twenty twenty three as police officer uh as Police Week and May fifteenth, twenty twenty three as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have den- has designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Two Rivers Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the city of Two Rivers. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of Two Rivers Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Two Rivers calls upon all citizens and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May fourteenth through May twentieth, twenty twenty three as Police Week. And be it further resolved that the city two ri- the city council further calls upon all citizens of Two Rivers to observe May fifteenth, twenty twenty three as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes dated this first day of May twenty twenty three.
All right. Thank you, chief. Looking for a motion to adopt the proclamation. Thank you, Bill. Seconded by Scott. Thank you very much. Any council discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. Brings us to C, National Public Works Week Proclamation for May twenty first through the twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, connecting the world through public works. The recommended action is a motion to waive, a motion to read and adopt the proclamation. Matt is up there and all set to go.
The theme of uh the week, National Public Works Week is connecting the world through public works. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Two Rivers. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for building, improving and protecting our national nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the city of Two Rivers to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Two Rivers do hereby declare the week of May twenty first through May twenty seventh, twenty twenty three as National Public Works Week and urge all citizens to join with rep- and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies does designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions that they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life dated this fifteenth day of May, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much, Matt. Looking for a motion to adopt the proclamation.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Tracy. Seconded by Darla. Any council discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. Moving along to D, which is a resolution expressing appreciation for the members of committees, commissions, and boards who retired as of April, twenty twenty-two or have ended their service during the past year. The recommended action is a motion to read and adopt the resolution. Greg.
And again, sorry, I see another typo there, but actually who've retired as of April, twenty twenty-three, correct on the resolution. Uh and uh or have ended their service during the past year. And some of these are folks that sometime over the course of the past year have, for various reasons, had to step aside, resign from their duties. We really appreciate the, all of the service provided by these folks. Uh resolution is stat- expressing appreciation for members of committees, commissions, and boards who have retired as of April, two thousand twenty-three or have ended their service during the past year. Whereas many hours are volunteered by the citizen members of committees, commissions, and boards. And whereas the following citizens have volunteered for the betterment of the community and have recently completed their terms on the committees, commissions, and boards identified. Kathy Peterson, Advisory Recreation Board. Justin Klinkner, Advisory Recreation Board. Chase Mathias, Advisory Recreation Board. Greg Conan, Business and Industrial Development Committee. Kate Gadd, Environmental Advisory Board. Larry Thomas, Environmental Advisory Board. Tracy Yagi, Community Development Authority. Wendy Brandt, Central Park West Three Sixty-five Planning Committee. I I would note that the planning committee was a special committee whose work is done. Uh fundraising committee is still active, but that's why you see this listing. So Wendy Brandt of the Central Park West Three Sixty-five Planning Committee. Also folks that served on that committee, Nathan Cronenforst, Kathy Peterson, Jane Ralcy, Teresa Lieberg, and Scott Steckmesser. And whereas it's appropriate that the city of Two Rivers and its citizens express their appreciation for the services these volunteer citizens provide. And whereas their efforts to promote public interest and to improve the welfare of the residents of the community should not go unnoticed. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council, the City of Two Rivers expresses its official commendation for their services. And be it further resolved, the city manager send a copy of this resolution to the retiring committee, commission, and board members as a token of official thanks and appreciation of the city council. Uh approve this fifteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-three.
All right. Thank you very much. Looking for a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Tracy. Seconded by. Thank you, Darla. Any council discussion?
It will not be voting because I would then be thanking myself.
Well, that's okay to thank yourself, though.
You can thank yourself. I know.
All right. This is a roll call vote. Amanda.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much for that. And thank you, Scott and Kathy, who are in the audience today for your service on those uh boards and commissions.
Heartfelt thanks, Kathy.
Yes, very much so. On to E, which is an ordinance to create chapter six dash fourteen entitled Licensing of Commercial Quadricycles Pedal Pubs and amend section one dash two dash one entitled Fees to create a procedure for licensing quadricycles pedal pubs and license fees. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the res- or the ordinance, sorry. Greg, you want to walk us through this?
This is really a work product of the police department and our clerk's office. City attorneys learned a lot about pedal pubs along the way, not from personal experience, but from researching the statutes. So. Uh we have one or two in our neighboring city. They might want to visit. And we'd certainly welcome the opportunity if there's a Two Rivers business created that wants to do this. Chief.
Yeah. So I know you guys don't like seeing me up here that much, and I don't like being here, but in this case, it's Amanda's fault. Um I do give her applause. She's looking to stay ahead of any issues and with that pedal pub next door. Um and then a couple down in Chaboygan, I think she was right on the game. So this is in statute. It describes uh commercial quadricycles. They're not like anything that affects our bicycle ordinance. They're not like anything else in the statute. Um they would be twelve seats for passengers or more for those pedal bikes. And they're only for pedal propulsion, not for like e-bikes, electric moving. Um so with that being said, um she put together a very similar um ordinance um to other ordinances that we found. Um and then what I did was I worked with her to make it more consistent with some of our other ordinances. Um so when you look through there, um one of those being the ten PM that we would look for. Um by statute, it actually says that no person may drive a qua- a commercial quadricycle occupied by passengers after ten thirty PM or less if ordinance uh states an earlier time. Um so in this case, we looked at ten o'clock as being an acceptable time because that would be uh consistent with our noise ordinance and also our beer garden noise regulations. Um we also looked at insurance. As you know, I was just here not too long ago making everything consistent with that. Um for golf carts, vendors, sidewalk cafes, et cetera. So we looked at one million dollars per person, one million, any um person injured or killed beyond that, and one hundred property damage. So that would be consistent with all other ordinances. Again, it doesn't conflict with our bicycle ordinance because it's defined by statute and it's commercial with twelve seats or more and pedal power. It's also consistent with our golf cart ordinance operation as far as I looked at two headlamps and taillamps with turn signals for nighttime operation to be consistent. As I know that was an issue recently with golf carts. Also, no operation on state highways or those over twenty-five miles per hour, except across um the state highways to go to businesses. But with the understanding that in the case of a pedal quarter- quadricycle, we would make the exception for sixteenth to twenty-first street on Washington. Because it is four lanes, it has the availability to do so. And realistically, what you're looking at is a lot of taverns in that district where you would use these things. Um and then also no operation on trails and to follow motor vehicle um regulations. So that's my update.
Okay. Thank you. Anything to add to that, Greg?
I just had a question, Ben. I'm I'm sorry, maybe I overlooked it here. What's the, what's the standard for how these operate? I mean, are they in the traffic lane yielding and pulling over to overtaking traffic like a golf cart? Or are they far right like a bicycle?
Far right like a bicycle.
Okay. Is that?
And we could better state that in the.
Is that stated explicitly in here or just it falls back on state law?
Falls back in state law. And I would add that um if if you're not aware, what these things are for is the consumption of alcohol and travel. Um so what state law provides is that what you could per se do, and the easy way to look at this that I've explained to people is think of a limo where a limo picks people up for commercial purposes. You can have twelve people jump inside. They can consume alcohol, but there's not actual sales going on inside there. So this would be the same thing. You could um let's say you got picked up at any one of the taverns. You could get on this pedal bike with up to thirty-six ounces by statute. So basically three cans of beer uh would be the equivalent. And then you could consume, but you cannot get out of that commercial vehicle um to then consume anywhere else. It has to be consumed on that pedal bike. Uh so by statute, um one of the unfortunate things I actually found out when looking at this is you could not um purchase your alcohol, get on said pedal bike, and maybe go down to Nishota Park and then get off and then consume in the park because it does not allow for that. It has to be the consumption on the pedal bike.
And I'd like to note that it's for consumption of only fermented malt beverages. You can only take or no wine that is said.
Correct.
Tim, you got a question?
How would they get to Two Rivers if they can't go on a state highway?
Yeah. So what they have to do is they would have to put in their proposal to um the city clerk, which would then go to me for safety reasons and approvals, and then ultimately to you guys. Um but it would have to state in there that if I am said company, I'm going to be keeping this pedal bike in said area. So I have the approval to keep it, you know, say at Vets Park, just for, just for sake of argument that somebody owns Vets Park privately. I've I've gotten the approval to keep it there. Well, then not only do I have to provide that approval to both the city clerk and myself um for reasons, but then I have to get approved routes of travel um for that purpose, for that commercial vehicle. So if I wanted to operate it, I would have to not only stick to ordinance, but I'd have to have an approved route. Are you asking if they start in Manitowoc and come to Two Rivers?
They couldn't come and visit Two Rivers.
Okay. I I I thought that was the question he was asking, like, because we know the pedal bike is in Manitowoc. We're asking if they can come to Two Rivers, but they can't on that state highway. So there's no way for them to travel from Manitowoc to Two Rivers. Correct. And their ordinances won't allow that either at this, at this stage of the game because they don't have approved routes to do so.
Oh, even if they say trailered it here, then they still need a location that they own.
Well, that would be part of that.
They need a base of operation.
That would be that part of the approval process. I mean, if that was the case and they were able to do so, I mean, I guess that's something we'd have to look at, you know.
It doesn't have to be garaged here per se.
Right. That they trailered it in or if they kept it at an establishment. You know, a lot of times what they do is they partner with a tavern. Um, you know, to keep said vehicle there, and that's part of their route as well. So it's kind of one hand helps the other. I would be okay if we could have that somehow trailered in as well, just because you may get a private party where they may trailer it into Two Rivers. Uh maybe it's a bachelor party, bachelorette party, or whatever kind of party. And they use it in Two Rivers, but then they may trailer it back up and take it back home to their establishment in Manitowoc. So they may not necessarily have a a shop or setup shop here in Two Rivers, but it may be something that we could still use as long as we have the ordinance. And if I'm right, Amanda, that would allow for that if it was in the the proposal and it was done in a legal area where you could do the unloading and loading and parking.
It could be trailered in. We would just, they would still have to go through the whole process because they need, we need to know where they're starting at for the sake of selling the fermented alcohol beverages. Because we can't just say, well, we start at this tavern today, start at this tavern tomorrow. They need the start so we know where those beverages are being sold.
And that's fine. I was just confused as the fact that had to be.
The thirty-six ounces can only be sold at the one spot that they can carry on the commercial quadricycle.
I thought Manitowoc was using it more like going from bar to bar, like pub crawl situation.
As long as you don't exceed the thirty-six ounces on the commercial quadricycle at one time.
They'd have, they'd have to buy it all at once at one spot, leave it on there while they went to the other place and then drink what they.
No, they can carry it up per spot. They just can't over their time on the commercial quadricycle cannot exceed the thirty-six fluid ounces.
I think there was just confusion because somebody had asked if there was only one point of purchase.
It has to be a starting point of where the route is starts from. That has to be approved.
So that's the only thing that has to be maintained, and then it could go to other places on an approved route. Okay.
If you're asking a question for chief, yes.
I um I'm a little confused about the route because um I don't know. I thought I read in here that they can go on Washington Street. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I explained is that we would allow for the operation from sixteenth to twenty-first street. Um reason being is that, again, there's several of those establishments that may want to do that. But it would also have to be an approved route. Um but that would be a potential accepted route that they could use that portion. We didn't want to go any further south than that because then you run into bridge concerns with with traffic um to the north, the same thing.
So then other bars could have this um if they establish a route, is that?
Well, so a bar is not actually running it. So this is actually a commercial system.
Buy their alcohol somewhere.
Correct. So they would come up with, if I was the person that was running the quadricycle, I could come up with a route and go to Chief Amanda and say, this is the route that I would like, and it incorporates six stops at different taverns throughout the city. Can I get this route approved? And if Chief Amanda says that that's an approved route, then that's what I could do. I would have a start point on there. I would have the unload or load of the the quadricycle or where I'm keeping it um that route, and we're good to go.
It's, okay. I I guess on Washington Street, it sure is becoming crowded. That street is becoming pretty crowded. Because I mean, with all the.
And you could certainly restrict that as well. I thought um rather than start that route, I would come to council with more of an acceptable location because I think this really relates to taverns, and there's quite a few taverns on Washington Street. This is not my thing by any means, um but something that I felt that we had to be open to and have this discussion, quite frankly.
Anyone else have a question be for chief before we get into council discussion? Or Amanda?
Amanda.
Sure.
If I'm understanding this correctly, he gets a quadricycle. Everybody comes on with their three cans of beers that they bought from the tavern next door. They can only consume those three cans while pedaling around on an approved route. And if that route takes them to six different taverns along the way, they leave their cans on there and they can go inside and drink whatever and then come back out and try and pedal. That would be hilarious.
That is set by state statute, Greg.
No kidding. Okay, interesting.
I think again, it's it's one of those, again, this isn't my gig, but I think it falls in line with uh anything you can do with alcohol in Wisconsin. We're gonna give it a shot. Or a beer, at least.
I'm wondering, are there any taverns that are on board with this and who are interested in participating?
Oh, so we just had one person that reached out to me that said, is this something that Two Rivers does? Is there rules about it? Um and at that time, obviously, we didn't have an ordinance. So since the head of the game and create something so when someone does try to apply.
I I will say that I did reach out to um Manitowoc and spoke with them. You know, obviously, I had Amanda's feedback from period of time she was there. So we had a lot of that to go off of um as far as routes and what was a kind of forecast in the initial talks and what was just unreasonable. Um and then I also talked with Nick Reimer, the chief there, and and spoke about any issues with it, and they've had absolutely no issues at this point. But it's also fairly preliminary. And I I don't know of any issues in Chaboygan, but you know, that's fairly preliminary, too.
Yeah, they seem to be popping.
All right. Looking for a motion to adopt it.
I'll make that one.
Thank you, Scott. Seconded by Bill. All right. Council discussion. Tim.
Oats, unmalted greens and.
What park are you on? Page?
Six fourteen.
Fourteen-two, and then what number?
Number five.
Number five. Okay.
Containing point five percent or more alcohol by volume. Most light beer is un. And then you get in.
That's that's actually language right out of the state statute for that definition.
Like a light beer would actually not.
Any other council discussion?
It seems like a cool idea, and in my opinion, I mean, it's cool to get outside, recreational with it, I guess, so to speak. Um it's not an intoxicated driver because the driver's got to stay sober. He drives. The rest of them just kind of power it.
Just hope they keep their feet on the pedal so we can keep rolling down the road.
Otherwise, that driver is gonna have a really tough time.
Bonnie.
Drinkers get from the pedal thing to home.
Maybe someone picks them up. Uh maybe they walk, I guess, however they get home from a bar nowadays, I'd imagine. Be my best guess. I would walk, but I said I would assume that they walk or get a ride or call an Uber or however they get home from a bar nowadays, because that's kind of where they're starting and ending at. So it'd be as if they stayed at the bar that whole time versus just traveling bar to bar. I think where you see this a lot, Bonnie, is you'll see, you know, bachelorette, bachelor parties, things like that, where people are looking for, you know, that little niche, that little niche to do and uh do something different. So. My sisters and my my family did it on a girls' night up north. So they had a, they had a ton of fun. They had a dozen, they had a driver to come back home, but they had a lot of fun doing it. I think the tourism possibilities are very positive. Um I think it falls in line with what we've worked at, Elizabeth and I, with beer gardens and the noise ordinance and stuff in the past. So again, it's not my gig, but I think that it would be important for the city of Two Rivers to at least have something in place if somebody comes and presents and wants to do that. Oh, it's local business. Why not?
Good initiative. Honestly, thank you, guys.
It's nice. It was proactive instead of reactive.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Amanda.
That's Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Tracy Coach. Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, brings us to F, which is Neshota Park Master Plan, presentation by Parks and Rec Director Mike Mathis. The recommended action, motion to adopt the plan as recommended by the Parks and Rec Director. And Advisory Rec Board and affirm the location of the new Neshota Park Playground on the former ball field consistent with the plan. Mike?
Evening, everyone, um. Unfortunately, most of the kind of theoretical pictures, um, are, we don't have a lot of theoretical pictures, so you're gonna have to. Use your imagination with me a little bit as we talk about the park and kind of the concepts we have in mind, uh, for it. On the projector, we have the six kind of overarching guiding goals for the plan. Now, of course, you guys got the full plan. There's a bunch of like sub-objectives underneath each one of those, so we'll go through this quickly, uh, with you. Um, obviously, keeping a clean park is important to us. Uh, this goal, the objectives associated with it mostly revolves around trash pickup, trash cleanup and restrooms. Now, there are, those are difficult issues to, um, kind of work around because of. Staffing and the amount of use in the park, one of the huge issues we have is the use of portable porta-potties, uh, at the beach that we'd love to get rid of those. Uh, but how do you do that? You probably got to build new restrooms and so we don't really define. Uh, in the plan how those restrooms would take shape, but to give us some flexibility in the future to, to address that with some creativity. But it is a goal to try to improve that cleanliness, that experience and the overall upkeep of the park through the cleanliness kind of aspect of it, pretty straightforward on that one. Uh, in terms of safe, uh, this was very much about, um. The kind of physical, human safety, people saying like at night, it's not well lit or we've had some issues and with vandalism. Uh, at Neshota, so a lot about lighting, uh, both natural light and opening spaces up. And getting artificial light with, you know, uh, spotlights or. Uh, accent lighting, different types of things that we might be able to knock out and do there as well. And then safety in terms of, you know, trees and just creating a welcoming and, uh, place for people to come and, and visit and be a part of the park. Uh, next one, uh, the natural aspects of the park, of course, are huge for anybody that's gonna come visit the park. Uh, so really working on the woodlot area, especially at Neshota, uh, it has a lot of, um. Kind of dead, dangerous trees in it, some invasive species issue, issues, so working on that area. Helping restore dune grass areas along the beach to help with erosion and, uh, habitats, others, creative ideas in terms of the natural kind of. Setting is doing some pollinator plantings, maybe integrated with some art projects as well, which is, uh, kind of a fun piece we'll get to as well. So yeah, really trying to maintain the things that people love, we saw throughout, um, the feedback sessions that we did that. That was just a core part, is the natural beauty, the peace of being in the park and getting into enjoy it, and so. This is very much there to, uh, help protect that and, um, yeah, keep it with the thing that we love the most about the park. Next one you have there, big overarching goal is convenience for the park, this one takes into a lot of things. Uh, this takes into accessibility, uh, so physical, uh, accessibility, folks with wheelchairs or walkers or all types of mobility levels. Uh, this takes into consideration parking discussions as well, um. And so one of the core ways that we've, uh, addressing the accessibility and parking issues is pathways in the park, so. Blake Thisen from Park Architecture, who worked with us on Central Park, has continued to work with us on Central Park. Uh, kind of took a look at the park and laid out some new pathway designs for us to help with accessibility. And taking pressure off those main beach lots and making it easier for people from, to come from outlying parking lots and neighborhoods. So you could more quickly and conveniently get into the park, um. Yeah, then there, there was some discussion, we'll get into the feedback pieces here too briefly, but definitely lots of discussion, parking is a huge sticking point. Uh, on this, but there was discussion about how to increase some of the parking at, uh, Neshota and those, the two ways that we included in the plan. Was redoing and updating and expanding to some extent. The existing parking lot that's off of Twenty Second Street, the one by our storage barn right now, that lot is in desperate need of some TLC. Uh, and then adding some banks of parking along Pier Street, that's actually, it's significant. We reduced the amount of, uh, parking we were gonna add to the park because of community feedback, so there was a discussion and other ways to add parking. But actually pulled it back based on community feedback. Next, uh, fun, of course, and so this is where our new playground comes in to the plan, some other ideas for additional. Recreational facilities and some other play structure type equipments specifically around the zipline area. The plan is to put the new playground where the current ball field is, we'll get to the map here and I can explain further, but how do we then. Use that old play area to its best, to the best ability we can and maybe some obstacle course type equipment in there, nature play features. Uh, yeah, lots of fun ideas that we've included in the plan. Few other sports types things, uh, that we had, it was, uh, updating pickleball and tennis courts, uh, in here as well. Uh, bocce ball courts, and we also added in the multi-sport field, so this is a artificial turf type of, um, field. Now, we didn't designate a location, again, trying to give us ourselves some flexibility in the future. That we doesn't, didn't necessarily put in where we were gonna put that field. Uh, you could think actually of, uh, the field that's up at Lambo, uh, they have the huge, what's a, that's a full-size artificial just play, uh, field, this would be much smaller. What we've been envisioning on that, um, but yeah, happy to answer any questions about that. Uh, I do have Rock City, uh, that's of interest to a lot of people, Rock City's in the fun section. Uh, I got every piece of feedback possible basically on Rock City from, uh, bulldoze it and get rid of it and. Desperately please save it and do something with it and restore it to its former nineteen thirties glory, uh, of Rock City, so. Uh, we did land on just finding a way to restore, repurpose, giving ourselves lots of flexibility there, um, on Rock City. Finally, the other overarching goal we had was sustainable operations and this is about how do we make that park run well into the long term? In terms of finding re, uh, creative revenue generation, uh, opportunities, working with city council and, and Greg and. Um, to increase budget if possible, uh, and yeah, find ways to also use creative creativity to reduce expenses in the park as well. So there's lots there, hopefully you got a chance to look at it, um, and those are in terms of the overarching goals, any questions about those at all? No? Okay. That was fast, so I didn't want to take up all night with you.
But, um, well, I asked you some questions before and I think, I, 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 it's so much here, it's really hard to absorb it in a couple days, you know. I, um, like I. Are you gonna have more, um. Gatherings to, not necessar, well, I shouldn't say not necessarily for the public, at least for us. Well, that, this wouldn't be a bad work session either, to go over to see what he wants, because it's hard to, um. Are you bringing this to the budget?
Uh, no, we're looking for a recommendation to approve, uh, because Advisor Rec Board already hashed it out pretty hard, uh, on all the, uh, things that we'd like to do. In terms of budget, this is a ten-year plan with no funding guidance whatsoever, so this is not Central Park, this isn't one fell swoop, we're gonna totally redo the park. This is a piece by piece as projects come up where the opportunities lie type of thing, so, yeah.
Fully a guideline or a framework for what we hope will be a lot of future decisions on investment, on grant applications, a direct investment of tax dollars. I will vouch and the, the timeline here shows that we've got a well-established citizen advisory board in the ARB. They worked hard on this and there were, were a number of public input sessions on it, so.
It's kind of a comprehensive plan, s- so to speak, it's not something that is a budgeted plan, comprehensive plans aren't ness, aren't really a budgeted item. Their, their goals set out for the long term.
Definitely gives us a lot of support when we're going to Wisconsin DNR and other entities of, hey, we have a plan, we've thought about this, the, the DNR grants are. Great opportunities for habitat restoration, a lot of the things in here, as, as I was writing them, I'm like, I'm writing that specifically for that grant opportunity. And what you see in a lot of these master plans is you go pay somebody. Last time we did this plan in two thousand and two for Neshota, we paid forty, fifty thousand dollars to have this plan done by a consultant. And that person then took the time to go through and say all, all these possible funding sources, now they're possible. And for the most part, we know what those funding sources are, so we didn't go in here and state all those things because. Kind of know how to navigate that situation, just didn't take the, weren't gonna put that effort into it and focus on other things, so. The goal on goals, and we can, I've got maps and everything, so if you come up with other specific questions about setup and things we're including, we've got some more time to talk about it. In terms of the overall planning process, it really started back in August, that. It was, I think it was me and Greg had brought up about the opens place plan for the entire park district. Really with me coming in, a chance to take fresh, uh, a fresh view at that full open space plan. But we knew that we had wanted to make progress on a playground at Neshota. Uh, and that, that really was where like a lot of priority should be getting put was on Neshota, so really at that August. Meeting is when things really started to, uh, gain traction that we were gonna go for this. And so then into September, we kept talking about it, how we're gonna execute it, and then we brought in Blake and Park Architecture starting in, um, in October. He came in, took a lot of feedback directly from the Advisor Rec Board and then came back to us in January with some, uh, example images. Uh, some suggestions based on his research and being a very good landscape architect who's doing things all across the state for some pretty major park districts. So he had a lot of really good insight for us. Uh, then as we kind of phased out of Blake's work, we got more into the community input phase, so. Especially in the January and February ARB meetings, we had a huge amount of public feedback. People started learning about the plan and what was going on and they started showing up. So that January one, I would say we probably had pushing forty people attend as, uh, pu, the public, uh, and that's. Blows away anything that we would normally get at an advisor rec, uh, board meeting. And then to continue on that trend, we did do for a month, we had an online public survey, had just over two hundred and forty. Uh, people complete that survey, uh, I was pretty happy with that amount, uh, in terms of the amount, length of time. And so we got a lot of really good feedback, all of the feedback is in the document for you. Uh, there's a lot there, uh, from that, those questions, then we also did a public open house as a set. Uh, session for an advisor rec board meeting, so from six to nine o'clock on. March twenty-first, the public could come join and, uh, walk around and answer questions, kind of an interactive format, talk directly to advisor rec board members. There's of course that opportunity for feedback directly to board members and myself throughout the whole process. Then at our April meeting, uh, we discussed, uh, basically the full draft goals and timelines, uh, as the advisor rec board. And they then took a vote, uh, nine, it was nine to zero probably that night, uh, it was a unanimous vote to recommend it to you guys, to city council for approval.
Greg, you wanna go to the next?
So this is the overall, uh, drawing that, uh, that Blake put together for us. Um, let's go to the next one too, Greg, we'll split it in half.
Alright.
So it kind of, uh, this, this southerly, uh, still in, getting my, uh, cardinal direction mixed up.
Kind of, kind of the west side.
Yeah, west, west side, southwest, um. You can see the new pathways that Blake was suggesting, they're, uh, important to getting people through the park, flowing from parking areas, increasing accessibility. Um, a lot of the assessment of this was that, that section of the park closest to Garfield is really kind of underused. Uh, but it is one of our best natural assets for the park, is that it's just kind of this quiet, open space area where a lot of people can picnic. So the thought is to add a path that hopefully have a little curve to it, uh, kind of plant some trees along that as well. And make it a nice, beautiful path to walk and, uh, get through the park more easily. Um, there's also thoughts in here, this could be, uh, a good area for some pollinator planting. Maybe more set gardening, uh, uh, with those pollinator plantings and possibly some art displays and things like that, just trying to find another feature to use that side of the park. More effectively. Lots of talk about the old tennis courts as well, uh, that basically we knew. That the Washington Park Courts were a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to resurface and those courts in the grand scheme of things were in. They needed to be replaced, but in grand scheme of things, they're in pretty good condition, the courts at Neshota are in much worse condition. And so there was a lot of talk about, well, what do, what do we do with these courts, so we fully remove them, do we redo them, do we make them into a parking lot? That was the initial thought was actually to make that tennis court into a parking lot. What we ended up with based on all the community feedback is removing those tennis courts and likely putting bocce ball courts up in that corner of the park. And again, trying to bring in some more, make sure the trees are there and keeping it as a nice kind of quiet, uh, nature area. Uh, the, we moved away from pickleball there and tennis courts, putting new one, we, I'll show you the other side of the park here in just a second. Uh, Blake was really guiding us away from pickleball because it can be quite loud next to houses. Uh, you can also see the new bank parking there on Pier Street as well, so it's probably still quite a lot to figure out and how that parking would actually. Take shape and how, what we need to do to make it effective. Uh, we didn't really have in-depth discussions with DPW or traffic studies or anything like that, but just in concept, that was where we were, Blake was especially seeing a good opportunity for moving po, people under the park.
Basically more park, parking land, that existing traffic spine versus creating paved lots where there's green space now.
We did, uh, yeah, we do also show the new playground on the existing ball field, that ball field maybe gets used once a year, I don't think it got used at all last year. Because all of our games take place out at Vietnam or LB Clark, so this field, the lights aren't working, the scoreboard's not working, so it's really not used. Um, so the opportunity here to put a really important new entity centrally located in the park so you can get. Uh, to the beach, to the play areas, to the picnic shelters and everything kind of be the hub of the park. Was kind of the thought behind that, uh, that playground area, there's definitely strong voices of wanting to keep it in the current area. But then there was really a tremendous amount of positive feedback from ARB and a unanimous vote to place the playground there. And then a lot of feedback in the survey as well of looking for us to, uh, to repurpose that ball field and take full advantage of it, so. There is a square there, rectangle there for the multi-sport field, that was one place that we discussed it possibly going was in the old outfield. It, it specifically is not stated in the goals where that could end up, uh, I, I personally like that flexibility as we kind of. Figure things out in the future, the last point I'll make is there's a tremendous amount of feedback, uh, and calls for updating our concession stands and restroom facilities. Um, I thought this would kind of fall down the priority list as we went, but it didn't, as we got survey results and, uh, community feedback. It only, that was one of, possibly the most commented thing is how we need to improve concession stand facilities and restroom facilities. So what Blake is showing here is, um, fairly similar shaped, uh, building, but that we would kind of nudge it over. A little bit so that the pathway that's behind of it, you can actually see to the beach, so we have a nice. Uh, prob, probably an asphalt style, uh, bike and multi-use trail there, like Mariners Trail. So you have a beautiful corridor, you can see from the parking areas to the beach, oh, this is where I'm supposed to go, this is what the beach is calling me, I can see it, it's not. The view's not blocked by the picnic shelter, so, uh, in terms of what that building will actually look like, that's a whole nother. You know, a whole nother big, huge project of architects and construction firms and things like that, but that's the concept is that we'd like to. Uh, take a look at updating that with a nice picnic area for seating, uh, maybe food truck access and kind of. Pu, ports, if you will, the places to come in, I was looking at pictures of Portland, Oregon and, and food truck gardens and things like that, and there was a lot of positive feedback about those types of features. Go ahead Greg, let's go to the next one. Alright, and then this is the other side of the park, um. A few things here and kind of organization was you can see the updated, updated parking lot here, this is how Blake drew it, uh, as a suggestion. Um, that parking lot does have some water and drainage issues currently. It's also not a very attractive entrance into the park, so updating that gateway to the park is important. Um, then you can see we did locate, uh, a combined pickleball and tennis courts, uh, there is, uh, there instead of over at the old location. Um, and we all know that that can be an expensive, uh, uh, capital project for us, so it's here. Um, a few years down the line, we'll come, perhaps we'll bring that to you and say, alright, we've got this, uh, capital plan, it's, this is kind of where we're going. Let's talk about making this a reality, so perhaps that's city funds, perhaps that's grants, perhaps that's donors, that's gotta be determined when we get to that, that point. Uh, you also see consolidated volleyball courts, sand volleyball courts there, it'd be really nice to have those courts together so that we could have tournaments. And leagues that play together in kind of a, a complex of, of just three or four sand volleyball courts, so it'd be a lot more purposeful recreation use if there was lighting. And a, a stand for, uh, the referees and all that type of good stuff. Um, the arrows through the woodlot, what Blake was suggesting is really trying to open up the view. Uh, so that you feel more connected in the park and for those safety and lighting concerns. Uh, to me, what that means is habitat restoration, so there is, uh, the understore. So there is, uh, the understory honeysuckle buckthorn type of plants. There are some dead trees that need to be cleared. And maybe some kind of mixing up to get to a more native state of the tree species and different native species that should be in that woods. So in the long run though, trying to create it as a kind of safe quality habitats, uh, for people and animals. Um, the far end, the north end of the beach, uh, there was a suggestion of, especially as Blake looked at the traffic flows and parking, that we need to draw people down that beach to get them out of the parking lot, one and two, and get them all the way down to the other end to spread out that parking pressure. And so he's suggesting a small play area there, maybe a nature play kind of feature or something like that. Be fun to connect it into Rock City or something. Uh, so lots of ideas there. Definitely, and this is another important strategy for us as we look, the flexibility is good, as we look at restroom updates. As a restroom towards that end of the beach would sure be handy to, uh, take off pressure from restrooms. Of course, the, the horseshoe pits are all staying, would all stay and, uh, they're super popular, uh, horseshoe pit complex, of course. Um, there is, uh, points in the plan about adding rental facilities. So I'm thinking and what we kind of talked a lot about with the ARB is smaller picnic shelter type spaces that are more family sized. And so they could be dotted along these new paths, kind of in a quiet area way. When you go to the park during the summer, every picnic area is used up, uh, during the summer. And so making those rentable amenities for us to generate some revenue, give that opportunity to people to come and picnic and have a nice spot, uh, to gather is, uh, win-win for all of us. Yeah. Other important things is, I, I should have probably led with this is across the board, all of our parks are in desperate need of some delayed maintenance improvements. Um, in terms of picnic tables, grills, benches, we need them just about everywhere. And so this does ask for, we'll do a basically a quick inventory of those types of features and, uh, improve those basic amenities as well. Alright Greg, if you want to go to the next one, if there's no questions. There is the, uh, rendering of the new playground. So, um, basically the first of August, we're going to break ground on, um, the new playground. And there'll be, uh, kind of base excavation work taking place by DPW throughout August. And so they're going to kind of clear out that old, uh, clay base. We got to pull out fences, um, take out the old lighting and things like that. Do a new security lighting over the playground. So great that the DPW is going to work with us and, um, make this all happen so we can keep it in-house. Uh, have it connect to kind of the existing, there's a little parking lot there and make it all handicap accessible. The, uh, concrete sidewalk around the entire playground. So you don't see the sidewalk in this picture. Well, you do see it. Uh, but you don't see it connect to anything. But so that is a, a sidewalk around the entire thing. You also notice the main play structure in the middle is all ramped. So that is handicap accessible. Uh, so you could wheel, wheelchair or a walker or whatever it may be right up into the center of that, that main play structure. The other important feature of this is it's a poured in place safety surface. So it's that bouncy surface when you go to playgrounds, it's like a rubber so that it's super safe. Uh, has a surprisingly long, uh, term lifespan. And it actually can be repaired too. So you can come in and like fill in patches and damaged areas. Uh, an important part of the, uh, the sidewalk is also protecting that from lawn mowers and things like that. So fifteen to twenty year lifespan on that, and then you can repair it for longer lifespan. Right now in all of our playgrounds, we're dropping about almost ten thousand dollars a year in wood chips just to fill all of our playgrounds across the park district. So we won't have to do that for Neshota, which is arguably our most important playground. Another picture, so. There we go. Yeah, I wish I had more pictures of what things could look like, but again, uh, we didn't, we didn't, we wanted to keep this kind of lean and mean and get this done and put together a nice product for you guys. Uh, but not spend a lot of time on design costs, especially when things could be so far down the line. Uh, but I could definitely show pictures in the future, uh, as we, as we accumulate some things. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or anything you're curious about.
Um, the maintenance shed that you have in there that you plan on taking that down? Is there any place for a new one or?
Well, that's a little bit to be determined. I'm, I'm kind of curious about the new beach right now. Uh, because I want to keep that beach groomer as close as possible to the beach. Because it's such an expensive piece of, of equipment. And when you have sand in that equipment, you want to drive that as little as possible, uh, to reduce wear and tear. So yeah, possibly, I think I, the way I wrote the goal is I hedged a little bit that maybe we can make that, that building, paint it and screen it with plantings and things like that. Maybe there's a chance we could keep it there, but then also have the opportunity that we need to assess where we could end up moving it if that doesn't work.
According to this picture, do they plan, plan on clearing all the trees that are there and just leaving what the new green spots are or?
Where, uh, which part of the picture?
Everything that's not highlighted in a new dark green.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a clearing. That's a, a maybe a, a thinning, uh, for a higher quality habitat is what I would say. Yes. Especially invasive species, species. What you see in there is honeysuckle. So honeysuckles, the, the mid-story, uh, undergrowth that kind of blocks your view, it's invasive, it shades out natives. Uh, what we want to have is more of a natural state that you might see up at Point Beach or you might see it, uh, at the, the nature center is those type, those types of habitats.
Any other questions for Mike while he's up here? Okay.
Yes, not a question, but, um, nice job on the report. I read through the whole thing. Awesome job. It's very detailed. It, I love it. It has all the different comments about what people had and stuff like that. So nice, nice job writing it down.
Yeah, in two thousand and two, there was a plan. It was over a hundred pages, I think. And it was quite expensive to put that plan together. So you guys got the Mike Mathis written version on the cheap. And then you got Blake's expertise, uh, to come in and give us the nice map visuals. But I think with all the feedback and the ARB's input, we got a pretty good product here. So.
Again, the action in front of the council tonight is asking you to both adopt the plan and reaffirm that location of the new playground equipment. You approved the purchase contract on that play equipment earlier this spring. And the ARB had made its recommendation anticipating it would go on the infield of, I'll call it the former ball field. But that was also as this planning process was midway. So we thought it was appropriate to come back and put a, put a period after that one as well. So that's why the recommendation, the way, uh, the way it's presented. And you're right, I think this was, Mike's done a great job of leading on it. The ARB really rolled up their sleeves and worked hard. Very cost-effective way of doing a major facility plan.
ARB spends some late nights. We, we pushed to nine o'clock several of these meetings, uh, several times to.
And the outside expertise and, and moderation.
And Blake, uh, helping us twice coming on down. And he did a lot of these renderings and kind of guided us through a lot of what you see there. And he, he always talked about it being like a house and, and multiple bedrooms and, and trying to connect them all together. Uh, so looking for a motion on this.
Thank you Scott, seconded by.
Thank you Tracy. Uh, council discussion.
Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote.
I was gonna say no discussion, just compliments all the way around to the ARB. To Mike Mathis, this is, this is excellent, right down to all the supporting documentation on your decisions. I love the line item schedule. It should make it easier at budget time.
Job well done, no doubt. Alright, roll call vote. Amanda.
Adam Wohuski.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimounas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
All in favor.
Alright, thank you. On to G. Authorization for city hall and other departments to be closed on Monday, July third, twenty twenty-three. Employees to take personal leave or unpaid. Recommended action is a motion to authorize city hall and other department heads to be closed on Monday, July third, twenty twenty-three. With employees to take personal leave or unpaid, pretty self-explanatory. Uh, obviously assuming fire department, police department, rec will all be.
Version of the park staff, yeah. Community house may very well be closed. Library will be open. Uh, so this is just allowing that flexibility. I didn't put it here, but I think we discussed previously, the council meeting would default to the fifth.
Do recall that, yep.
Yep.
Okay, looking for a motion on this. Thank you Bill, seconded by Bonnie. Hey, sorry Tracy, got Bonnie. Any council discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. On to H. Amendment of Personnel Policy Manual Regarding Retiree Health Insurance. Uh, the recommended action is a motion to adopt the amendment as recommended by the city manager and personnel and finance committee. Greg, walk us through that.
I may have overkilled on background on this, but essentially the city up until twenty eleven, twenty twelve provided most of its full-time employees with a very generous and very expensive post-retirement health benefit. In the day it was created back in the eighties, insurance wasn't that expensive. And our understanding was it had been a trade-off in union negotiations for employees foregoing wage increases and things. But it became apparent, um, about twelve, thirteen years ago that it was high time to get that grandfathered out. And so through bargaining with the police and fire unions and through actions taken by the council to amend the Personnel Policy Manual. Um, employees that, uh, were already on board, were hired before a certain date, were grandfathered and all, all new hires, depending on what employee group you were in. After a date certain, around twenty eleven, this benefit was no longer available. And, uh, so it is carried forward. You, you note with the history and I provided examples of them. Uh, the council provided, in addition to bargaining this change, did agree to provide individual letters of agreement to the grandfathered employees to be placed in their files. So it represented a contract between the city and that employee, as well as something that in the case of unions was in the bargaining agreement. Um, what, and that in addition to the benefits provided, which for police and fire are pretty much a retirement after age fifty and continuing to age, the, the benefit would be there up to age sixty-five or Medicare eligibility. For the, for department heads and the city manager, it was a six-year benefit, max six-year benefit. That was also extended to the electric utility craft union at the time. And then there were some other employees outside of those groups I just described that were given either one or three years right to that benefit based on their years of service to the city. So that was all pretty well documented, but we, it was pointed out to me early, very early this year after adoption of a totally revised personnel policy in twenty twenty-two, which was long overdue. That, um, the po- the personnel policy language did overlook one aspect of that continued benefit. Which was in each of those cases, those employees that were grandfathered and still had some post-retirement health benefit, were given the right to leave the plan upon retirement or be out of the plan if they were already opting out upon retirement. And then come back at a later time, once. You couldn't hop on and off the plan multiple times. But I, I think the major impetus for that was, we heard from employees back in that time that said, well, I've got a spouse who's not going to retire as early as I do. Uh, that spouse has, uh, health coverage available to them. I don't need it. When I retire as say a police officer at fifty-five or as a lineman at fifty-eight, whatever. However, it should be nice to have it when my spouse also retires. So that, that was provided for and, um, there's not reference to it in the amended Personnel Policy Manual. So that, and I apologize, you got one version that was not redlined and one that was. Hopefully you saw the redlined version and that's what, that's what's intended to be corrected there. We brought this up at Personnel and Finance Committee meeting on April twelve. Uh, the need for, and need and support for, uh, correcting this language was endorsed by the Personnel and Finance Committee that night. Those minutes were on your last agenda. Uh, Adam and Jeff were there. I think Bonnie arrived late at that meeting, may have voted on this too. I don't, I don't recall, but it is recommended by the, the Personnel and Finance Committee. The specific language is what's in front of you tonight.
Okay, looking for a motion to adopt this amendment. Thank you Bonnie, seconded by. Arla.
Thank you very much. Sorry, she beat you. Uh, any council discussion? Um, this one's only fair. It was something that was given, kind of taken away, not on purpose, accidentally, just kind of fell through the cracks. And, and I think we, we owe it to our word, uh, to keep our word to, to something that was offered to people.
It hasn't impacted anyone yet, but thank you to, to Brian and other department heads who pointed this out that it could impact employees retiring in the future. And we wanted to get it straight.
No further discussion? Roll call vote, Amanda.
Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shimounas.
Aye.
At Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wohuski.
Aye.
All in favor.
Alright, on to I. Elimination of no parking restrictions for spaces on the west side of Madison Street between twelfth and fourteenth street. Recommended action, motion to concur with the recommendation of the Public Works Committee, which just met prior to our city council meeting. Um, Matt, do you want to go over your findings and Scott and, uh, Tracy, are you right?
He's chair.
Okay.
I'm member.
Yep.
So is Bill.
And Bill, you guys can feel free to comment in then Phil, Phil has said on whatever may be left out or any reason.
So before the council meeting, I handed out a memo that I had prepared, uh, regarding the parking along uh, Madison Street from twelfth to thirteenth and on twelfth between Monroe and Madison. Uh, the agenda items specifically called out five areas, uh, that we're looking to eliminate the yellow painted curbs and remove no parking signs, uh, from here to corner, from here, from one sign to another, et cetera. Um, specifically within the memo, uh, we can go through that real quick. Is in front of the church at twelve eighteen Madison Street, uh, removing about twenty feet of yellow painted curb, which would, uh, provide about one additional parking spot. Uh, item number two, about ten feet of additional curb south of the, uh, gated driveway entrance. Uh, immediately adjacent to a power pole and a guy, guy wire. Uh, item number three, about forty feet of yellow painted curb. Um, at twelve hundred Madison Street, leaving about, uh, fifteen feet from the stop sign remaining as yellow painted. Um, in theory that could all be removed because state statute, uh, would actually, uh, kick in and, uh, controls the distance from stop signs and crosswalks. Uh, item number four, uh, removal of approximately twenty-five feet of yellow painted curb adjacent to seventeen nineteen twelve street and the no parking sign from here to corner. And item number five was the removal of the no parking signs, uh, no parking between signs, signs. Uh, located on the north side of twelfth street, adjacent to seventeen hundred twelve street and twelve oh seven Madison Street. Those were the specific five items that were, uh, discussed. Um, or presented within the agenda. There was a sixth and seventh area. Uh, the property owners were notified in this area. And Travis Stevens of twelve eleven Madison Street asked to have the yellow curb removed in front of his, uh, property. Along with the no parking here to corner sign, the way the, uh, agenda item was read was looking at the parking between, uh, on Madison between twelfth and thirteenth. So I added it into my memo. And then between the two drive entrances for twelve oh seven Madison, there's a small piece of yellow curb in there as well. Again, uh, applicable parking restrictions from state statute would be applicable for enforcement. So the yellow painted curb is actually just a, something that is over and above, uh, what is enforceable. So it's a visual cue to motorists, uh, no, you should not be parking there. Uh, and I've actually stated or cited various state statutes as far, far as, uh, distances from driveway entrances, uh, loading zones, uh, fire hydrants, uh, things of that nature within the memo. Overall, the, uh, recommendation from the committee, uh, that met at five forty-five was to accept the motions as presented and present them to, uh, city council for formal action.
Okay, thank you. Anything to add from any of the committee members that just met on this?
Um, yeah, Chris, uh, representatives from Christina's Bakery was at the meeting as well. And they are very supportive of this. Give them a little more parking spaces available for their place. And I think Emily at the High Lift was also in support of this as well.
Christina's is the one that brought it to, to our attention. And then we brought it over to Public Works, uh, knowing that we needed some more parking in that area. So hopefully we're doing some good things to add some good, uh, quality parking to, to very busy businesses on Madison Streets.
in that area. So hopefully we're doing some good things to add some good uh, quality parking to, to very busy businesses on Madison Street. So great work by the committee on that. Good job by Matt on getting this detailed and sent out. Greg, I know was part of that as well. Him and Matt met first, I believe, walking down there and seeing what the heck we can do about that. So city government does work.
Yep, and you can make those calls whether you live in the city or not. If you own a business here, we're here to serve. Just referencing the earlier question.
It was done in the rain too, right? You said?
Yeah.
It'll work.
With a stiff wind off the lake.
Alright, so looking for a motion to accept what the Public Works Committee just met on and getting rid of those no parking areas in the memo provided. Do I have a motion on that? Thank you Bill, seconded by Scott. Thank you very much. Council discussion. Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, brings us to the final item J. Automatic Mutual Aid Agreement between the Two Rivers Fire Department and the Manitowoc Fire Department. Recommended action, motion to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Greg, little info.
Over to Dave.
Thank you Dave.
Be some history on this is past practice showed that when we had a structured fire, our officers would go out on the engine after getting ready, leaving the fire station, calling on the radio to dispatch Manitowoc Fire to assist us. They are the only other career department that's near us and they're the fastest option to help us when there's a structured fire. To mitigate this time delay, we developed an agreement with the city of Manitowoc Fire Department. So when there's a confirmed structure fire, we're talking, it's confirmed to dispatch that there is smoke and or flames that both Manitowoc and City of Two Rivers are dispatched to the scene at the same time. So there's no delay. We don't have to wait for my guys to get their turnout gear on, get in the truck, get out the door, call on the radio to dispatch, have dispatch call Manitowoc Fire Department. This saves us a significant amount of time and it could be the difference between life and death when it comes to uh, somebody trapped inside a structure. So this is um, it's, it's the right thing to do and doesn't cost the city anything. When they have a structured fire, we respond typically with an ambulance because they have more resources. They have four stations, they have more resources. They would like us to respond with a paramedic ambulance and cover their service area for EMS calls. In trade-off, they'll send an engine with three to four firefighters to our structured fire. So we'll have our four typically and then we'll have their four to deal with that incident initially and then we'll have our mutual aid come in after that. Um.
Basically takes an existing practice, but optimizes it and probably shaves ten minutes off the response time, which as the chief said, is huge in terms of the rest of human life and the ability of our people to take action at the fire ground.
Cause there's a lot of, there's a lot of trading of resources. Today, Manitowoc ladder truck is out of service. So the only ladder truck for City of Two Rivers and City of Manitowoc is City of Two Rivers ladder truck. So we, we trade back and forth every single day. It's very dynamic. Um, it's, it all makes sense.
Certainly does. Makes sense to me. Looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Tracy, seconded by Tim. Thank you very much. Any council discussion? Pretty basic. I thought so too. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, thank you guys very much. Onto number thirteen for information only. Greg, do you have that?
Not a whole lot. Just a reminder that the May work session is next week, Monday. There will not be a meeting uh, the week of the twenty-ninth. We've got five Mondays this, this month. Of course, uh, Memorial Day, if at all possible, mark your calendars to participate in the observance, uh, starting downtown in the parade. Next regular council meeting, Monday, June fifth. No closed session tonight. So while we're not getting out of here super early, it's earlier than it would have been.
Are you going to get an invitation note just to remind and take a tally of city council members going into the parade?
Yeah, and if, if people want to indicate with a show of hands tonight, how many are pretty confident they can, will, are planning on being there. That would be useful and Amanda will take note of it as you hold your hands up. See both Leclerc's. I see Mr. Wuhusky, Mr. Steckmesser.
Sorry. Checking my calendar.
Miss Coach and Miss Shimalunas.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Yep.
But.
Okay.
I will get an email out to Mr. Dolkey.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, looking for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you Bill, seconded by Tim. Thank you very much. Council discussion. None, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you and good night.